This meeting of the Margate Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Can I hear an amen?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Tom Collins.
Here.
Richard Patterson.
Here.
Michael Cristaldi.
Here.
Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Margaret Guber Nolte.
Here.
Craig Palmasano. Stephen Giasecki.
Here.
Remy Pelosi.
Here.
Joseph DiGeralamo.
Here.
Ron Grupo.
Here.
Michael Richmond.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press, and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of minutes of the meeting of August 26, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of decisions and resolutions. Number 40, 2021, Pet Friendly Ventures LLC; number 41, 2021, Christina and Eric Mendelson; number 42, 2021, Piranha Builders LLC; and number 43, 2021, Alan and Helene Zeiger.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Swift, would you like to come before, come up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, I appreciate you calling our case first. James Swift, 1335 Tilton Road, Northfield, New Jersey, appearing this evening on behalf of Curtis and Colleen Tegler on the application for 5-0 Seaside Court. We respectfully requesting, Mr. Chairman, to have this matter carried to the October meeting date without the necessity of re-noticing. We've had some challenges getting a full survey, and we ultimately just got it today. And I can tell you one thing, I was working on another case, and I talked to a survey attorney, he goes, "Yeah, we can get to you probably mid-December, maybe early January." So, you know, we're trying.
That's your problem, Pat. See you in October.
All right, yes, sir.
Do they need to re-notice or anything?
No, just...
28th.
The 28th. I'll make a formal announcement, Jim. So, if anyone's here for the Tegler application, Curtis and Colleen Tegler, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. 50 Seaside Court, block 610.05, lot 8. That's going to be heard on October 28, 2021, 6:30 p.m. In this room, the applicant will not be required to republish or re-notice. So if you're here for that, that's the announcement, that's your announcement. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, thank you, good night, thank you.
Our first case is Kevin Martin and Constance Ulrich, 8511 Fulton Avenue, block 714, lot 8, located in the S40 zoning district, seeking minor subdivision approval and see variance relief for lot area, lot width, and possibly others in order to construct two new single-family homes. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren, please be sworn in.
Sure. Just before, Mr. Chairman, before I swear in, Mr. McLaren, just a general announcement for the public. October 14, we are having, and for the board, which I think the board is well aware, but we're having a special meeting two weeks from today, October 14, 6:30 p.m. So, you know, that'll, we put the notices out as required by law, but I figured I'd make the general announcement. We're going to hear one application in particular, and, you know, hopefully we'll adopt the resolutions from the applications tonight, and then, to the extent we need any spillover from tonight, we'll have that meeting, but hopefully we'll get through everything tonight. But just that general announcement and...
But that Swift case?
That's going to be October 28.
That'll be the 28th?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, because he needs to still get some work in, work done.
Okay.
Mr. McLaren, do you swear a firm testimony or about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, this application was originally submitted but never heard in 2017. So it's in the application of Kevin and Connie Martin, 8511 Fulton Avenue, block 714, lots 8 and 10, within the S40WF zoning district. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city of Margate in order to subdivide two existing lots of different sizes and widths into two lots of equal width but varying areas due to upland and repairing areas being different. Currently, lot 10 is 30 feet wide and vacant, making it a non-compliant lot, and lot 8 contains a single-family dwelling with a lot width of 60 feet. Several variances are required, and as I will discuss in a minute. The properties are located in the S40WF zoning district. However, lot areas and building coverages are governed by Schedule B4 as opposed to exclusively B1, and actually, since our zoning laws have changed, since the original application, it's all required in B1 now. So the zoning chart is on page 2. Documents reviewed on the bottom of page 2 continue on to page 3. Section 3 indicates the variance is required. One is, the first one is lot area, which is for lot B. If I'm facing the properties on Fulton Avenue, A's on the left, B's on the right. Lot area B for, whereas 2,750 square feet is a minimum lot area, 2,723 square feet is proposed for lot B. So that's a variance of 30 or 27 square feet. Lot width, lot A, whereas a minimum lot width for zone S40WF is 50 feet, and 45 feet is proposed. So a variance of 5 feet for lot width is required. Lot width for lot B, again, that's the right one, it also requires a lot area, whereas a minimum lot width for zone S40WF is 50 feet and 45 feet is proposed. No waivers have been requested. There's an engineer's report attached to the application, and compliance to that were some waivers, additional waivers may be required except the applicant. But that's going to conclude my report at this time. Basically, it's a bulk standard that they need to fulfill and provide proofs.
Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. McLaren and Mr. Chairman. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicants, we have reviewed Mr. McLaren's report, Mr. Barnhart and I, and we concur with the contents thereof. Prior to getting started, I don't know if Mr. Manis wants to swear in, Mr. Barnhart, I anticipate that he may be my only witness. The property owners are also here with us tonight, may have to testify a little bit about the intended use of the property, but just to get started, I would ask Mr. Manis to get swear, Mr. Barnhart, and please.
Sure. John, just your name and business address, please.
John Barnhart.
Microphone.
Take that. You'd think I would know my name. John Barnhart, office address 400 North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner.
And do you swear a firm testimony or about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barnhart is qualified as an expert in many towns. He's appeared before this board on many occasions. We'd ask that he be accepted as an expert in the field of planning and engineering, please.
Can I answer after tonight?
Yes, we accept his credentials.
So just by way of background, the Martins have owned this property for some time, and initially, they had intended on keeping the house that's there for as long as possible. The house that's on the property now is kind of falling apart. Something has to be done one way or the other. It's not a flood-compliant house, and anything that gets built there is going to be substantially larger than is already on the site. Historically, what this lot has, and I'm calling it this lot, meaning one, but it's really two lots, as Roger points out, there's a 30-foot section that is a separate lot on the tax records, and there's a 60-foot section on which the house sits. Historically, the 30-foot section was a buildable lot. It had always been, in the historic tax records, a lot that could have been built upon, but ultimately, over time, that ownership remained consistent with the lot next door. So, the merger doctrine and Lochner, we've got two lots that have basically become one, one of which is 30 feet wide, one of which is 60 feet wide. As John will show you on a plan, the house sits on the entirety of the 60-foot wide lot. And that's important because there was some design aspect put into this years ago, that the house is sitting solely on the 60-foot wide lot, and there's literally nothing on the 30-foot wide portion. But we do know that in order to subdivide and reallocate the land to be 45 feet apiece, we need some variances. So John's going to walk us through, again, the historical aspect of how the lots came to be what they are today, and then we do have a request that the better planning alternative as opposed to one large McMansion would be two much more subtle homes, to the extent the board would grant these variances for the subdivision. You've got a 50-foot wide zone, the lots are going to be 40 feet wide each. Property owners would agree that any house that gets built there would abide by the 50-foot wide zoning requirement, meaning the setbacks would be greater, not less. Roger's report points out that if you have a 50-foot wide lot, you're going to have a greater setback than a 45. We're not seeking the 45-foot wide lots, and then to build a larger house on those lots, it's actually going to be much smaller, which preserves light air and open space and view corridors. For the many people who are here, they're going to have a beautiful view through two homes across the street as opposed to one large monolithic home that would block their views. Having said that, by way of introduction, John's going to testify as to the reasons under the municipal land use law in Margate Zone Code, as to why these variances would be justified, and then we would ask for the board to, I guess, go back and forth with some questions, and I'm sure the neighbors are going to have some questions as well. So John, if you don't mind, walk us through the plan.
Sure. So, as Eric already identified, the property is known as block 714, it's lots 8 and 10 on the current tax map. The site has a total frontage of 90 feet. Lot 8 has a 60-foot frontage, and lot 10 has a 30-foot frontage. If you're familiar with how a lot of these waterfront areas were developed or were originally laid out in Margate, in many, many areas, this being one of them, they were laid out into 30-foot lots, and over time, they got combined into various sizes, some 90s, some 60s, some 30s were left over. Some of the 30s throughout Margate were built on. There are some houses on 30-foot lots. What took place at this specific piece of property is that three lots were purchased at one point, and it's clear to me from the development plan, if you look at the survey that's on the sheet, the house was built on two of the lots, with small, but with setbacks from both property lines on the left and the right side of the home, and then the 30-foot lot was left as a remnant lot, presumably for future development, back at that time when these, when the property was developed. That property, the 30-foot lot, still sits today as a vacant lot. It's a grass lot, there are no improvements on that lot. The proposal is essentially to resubdivide the lot into two equally-sized lots, both having 45-foot frontages, and having areas that lot A being in excess of the requirement, lot B being slightly under the requirement with regard to area, and the frontages each being 5 feet short of the requirement. So, how do we try to justify that this is appropriate for the location? We recognize the sensitivity of subdivisions in the community, and we've been part of a lot of different projects over the years, and recognize this board's thoughts about, you know, subdivisions of undersized lots. But on this specific case, we think we have a few interesting things going that maybe set this apart a little bit. First of all, as Eric pointed out, we have a property that is completely non-conforming with regard to FEMA standards. This project would eliminate that house. It would increase this left-side side yard setback considerably and eliminate some non-conformities with regard to the existing structure, which is obviously a benefit. Secondarily, what this project does is, although as Eric mentioned, they're undersized lots with regard to width, our plan doesn't show up, but the decision was made that the side yard setbacks would be applied as if the lot was appropriately sized, at 50-foot wide. So the side yard setbacks would be established for a 50-foot wide lot, even though the lot is proposed at 45, which would help to preserve airlight and open space through the property and provide greater side yard setbacks than your typical 45-foot wide lot would be required.
And John, just to help you real quick there, Mr. Chairman, what the property owners have decided to do, in case there's any concern that later that setback would be something a property owner years from now would come in and try to challenge, they would deed restrict that so that any property, any house built on the property would have setbacks as if it was the larger size. So it wouldn't be a potential for the future development that somebody would come in, knock down the smaller houses, and build a bigger house. You would be guaranteeing forever that there wouldn't be anything bigger than what would be allowed if the lot were 50 on the property. So that would be in existence as a deed restriction recorded against the property for, you know, as long as the lot exists.
So that's for minimum side yard setbacks along with combined side yard setbacks?
Correct. You would be guaranteed having two smaller homes, not two bigger homes in the future. Because as we know, we're here for variances, people are going to come in at some point and say, you know, "That was great, but I want to make my house bigger." As a condition of approval, the property owners have given this a lot of thought, they would make sure that there would never be anything bigger than that built on the lot. So there's a give-back in that regard, over and above what they would otherwise be required to do.
Sure. So, in that same regard, you know, the discussion with regard to putting forth purposes of zoning that are advanced with an application like this, the first one that I'm talking about is preservation of airlight and open space. What this application does, as I mentioned, is it opens up the left-side yard considerably from the existing condition, and also by creating, it also creates an additional view corridor, albeit they're a little bit smaller, they're smaller than the existing condition of the open lot, but it's a slight increase in overall view corridor, but it does add an additional view corridor through this property. So we believe the airlight and open space is preserved with this application. And I think, most importantly, I think that the purpose of zoning that's advanced is the establishment of appropriate population densities. So if you look at this block, and you look at the other lots, there are some 50s, then right next to us, there's a 115-foot wide lot, and then our client's lot, which is 90 feet. If you look at our property in its entirety from an upland perspective, we actually have adequate area for two lots. The one lot is slightly undersized with regard to area, and there is a variance request, but that's simply because of a jog in the bulkhead. So if you add our land, it's a little over 5,600 square feet, which actually is the appropriate amount of land for two individual building lots at this location. So it's not a density discussion really that we're having, it's just a lot frontage discussion. So we believe that the density of this block, our neighboring property being 115 feet wide, if he subdivides that, it's two lots. It's going to be two oversized lots for the zone, but it's still two lots. So by allowing this subdivision to take place, if you look at the total frontage between our neighboring lot and this lot, and you average them, you actually would end up with an average of lots that are all over 50 feet. We unfortunately are slightly short, we're 10 feet short in our total frontage, but we do have the area. So we're proposing houses on lots that have the amount of land that's necessary to build a house in this zone. It's just the discussion of frontage, and the allocation of frontage along the street is a little bit abnormal for most of your lagoon or waterfront properties, in that you have a 115-foot wide lot next to us and then a 90-foot lot. So we believe that both of those purposes of zoning are advanced with regard to establishment of appropriate population densities, and also with regard to preservation of airlight and open space. The, I start the discussion with regard to the two lots, one being 30, not developed, one being 60, and is developed, that's a 60-foot lot. That's an interesting discussion, and we've dealt with this on a number of projects throughout Atlantic County, and this is not kind of a would've, could've, should've, but it's something that I think that is interesting and something to think about. If I had bought that lot, and not the guy that built the house on this lot, and I owned that lot for all this time, I could come in for setback variances for an existing lot of record that's been there for many years and get those variances to build a lot, build a house. The fact that the Martins own that lot essentially penalizes the Martins. Because they own it, the doctrine of merger gets them, puts the lots together, and they don't have the right to build on that lot. That lot has existed for many, many years vacant. This is not a condition which we see many times where you have a lot line on a piece of paper on your tax map, but then you look at the property and you say, "Well, the house straddles the lot." So even though that lot line still existed, it's really not a lot. In this case, that's not true. This, it is a vacant lot, lot has been for all them years.
Talked about that briefly, but I want to come back to that. The way that the house sits on the lot on the longboard side, the setbacks are respected as if the lot on the Margate side would have somehow at some point been developed. As you hit on, and as we talked about earlier, but for the fact that that lot is undersized and is owned by the same family, any of us could have come in as a buildable lot of record and built a house there, and if the house wanted, the architect wanted to design a house that were slightly bigger, this would in fact be a hardship, and at some level, the board might not have a chance to deny that. So you could have a small house built on the 30-foot wide lot, a slightly larger house built on the 60-foot wide lot, and we see all through town, there are 25s, there are 30s that are buildable lots of record, that the board, the building inspector, and you go to apply for a permit, they have to give a permit for that lot. And as John said...
Is that true? Because we had a case a couple of years ago on Rumsen Avenue.
That's only if there was a household lot previously.
Right. There was no house on the lot previously.
There was no house on this lot previous.
But if, I think, what John said is if he had owned this property in the 60s or 50s, whenever the first part of the property was combined with this one, and a house was built there... Excuse me?
Talk to me. Talk to me. Hey.
Talk with the comments.
Talk to me.
So, had there been a house there, you would have no choice but to allow a house to be built there. So the Martins bought the house from the person who owned it historically, and when that person had the house, the house is on the lot now, it was one property, it was lots 8 and 10, and unfortunately, if you look at the lot the way it's set up, setbacks are respected correctly, and it's just bad luck for the Martins that they didn't do something sooner, but ultimately, John, I think John is correct, that you could have had a house on the small lot and a house on the bigger lot, and there wouldn't be much to do. What we're saying is, you're going to take a 30 and get rid of that, and now have a 45, and directly next door, you're going to have a 45 with better view corridors, and you're going to have two smaller homes instead of one big house. I think John hit on the fact that the correct population densities, the light air and open space, the view corridors are all being respected that way. So although it didn't happen, it could have happened. Perhaps that's the way we should have said it. Sorry.
Is the setback on a 50-foot lot 8 feet?
Microphone. Where did that?
Is the setback on a 50-foot lot 8-foot?
Yes.
Well, why on the plan is it a 6.65 on the right-hand side?
So the plan was prepared, Mr. Richmond, prior to the property owners agreeing to make the house smaller. That was the max you could do there. Now they're saying, "We're going to make the house smaller with the..."
So you're going to have an 8-foot setback on that side?
Correct.
And you're going to have a 10-foot setback on the other side for parking?
Correct. That's right. Smaller house than is shown on the plans. An improvement that they voluntarily said, "We want the subdivision, we're willing to give smaller homes and bigger setbacks."
So with regard to negative criteria in order to establish the variance justification, the two topics are, is there a substantial detriment to the zone planner's zoning ordinance? From a planning perspective, I would argue that there is not, and my basis for that is the fact that we have adequate land area for two individual building lots at this location. We are in the aggregate in excess of the requirement for two lots. So that shows you that we're not asking for a density variance, and that we are not substantially impairing the intent of the zone planner zoning ordinance. The second prong is whether we are substantially impairing, I'm sorry, creating a substantial negative impact to the public good. And as I mentioned, by way of the way that this block lays out, this block lays out for essentially another four homes between these two lots. But the lot next to the Martins is slightly oversized, this lot is slightly undersized for the two. At the end of the day, if you look at the layout, that would be for 50-foot lots across there, if you had all, if you had both the properties together, the maximum it would be is four homes. If you allow this subdivision and the subdivision next door, it would still be four homes. So we believe that for those reasons, the variances are justified.
I think, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do, since John has completed his testimony, perhaps the Martins may or may not wish to testify, but we would turn it over to the board for questions, and obviously with the preservation of rights for Mr. Barnhart or the Martins or anybody else to continue to testify, but we would generally rest at this point.
What's the flood elevation there? 13, 14?
Nine.
Yeah, I think it's nine. Nine? Plus four?
Yes.
So that's 13. Right.
Oh, you mean the, you're saying the...
So you have, the finished first floor has to be at 13, right?
Yes, correct.
Right. And then, what's the grade there? Does anybody know?
It's going to be about seven.
Yeah, I don't have my glasses on. It looks like a seven. I've got some toko on the survey.
So if they want to park underneath, then Roger, then they're going to be allowed to go...
We give them nine feet for the parking.
Nine feet, plus 30.
Correct.
Right.
I'm sorry. See, I need my glasses, the street's poor.
Parking is, is or is not underneath?
Yes. Now?
So, in the proposal...
The proposal is to have the cars parked underneath.
Yeah.
We're not actually looking at a proposal for a house, we're just looking at subdivide.
I understand, I understand.
Right. Mr. Collins is correct, but at some point, if a house is built there, yeah.
At some point, yeah.
They gave us plans.
Yeah, the plans are representative of kind of what could happen. That's your typical Margate house, Mr. Oboland has prepared, but there's nothing that's been formalized, and obviously, the Martins went ahead and put the extra setbacks there. So whatever ultimately would get approved would be submitted to Mr. Gallantino, Mr. McLaren, and would be smaller than what you have in front of you.
These are, these are moot.
They're somewhat moot. Or not.
All right, I'd...
Mr. ...
Are the others now going to develop it?
Yeah. Well, it'll either be one 9,000-square-foot house or two smaller, but, and then Kevin and Connie can talk about this, the house is in bad shape, and to keep putting money into the house to, you know, put Band-Aids on, it's not going to do very much good. So at some point, it will either be one big one or two small, but it is going to get developed.
But either way.
Correct.
But they own the lot.
That's right.
Be one of two.
Yes. And the goal is if it's two homes, the Martins have a family, the ideal goal would be for them to have one and for the family to live next door, and the other, if it's one very, very big house, then they could all live in one big house. But this is also a situation where I'm sure the neighbors are going to say, "We don't want two houses." The city's going to get, you know, destroyed if two houses are built there. The difference in the lot width, by right versus the variance, is this, it's 5 feet. This is not going to ruin the town. One giant house on the lot is going to have a significant detriment to the neighbors, we think, but they have to do something. So is it better to have two subtle homes that are built with bigger setbacks based on the lack of this much land, or are we going to stand on ceremony and say, "You can't do it, it has to be one"?
You know, you rested about five minutes ago.
Well, I was commenting on what Mr. Grupo asked, but, okay, I'll turn it over to whomever wants to...
All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If there's several people, raise your hands. I'll recognize you, wait, no, no, no. Recognize you, come up and state your name and address, and then wait to be sworn in, and then you can speak. So if anyone from the public would like to speak, raise your hand. You're right there.
Thomas Henry, 416 North Lancaster.
Mr. Henry, do you swear a firm testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Tom Henry, and I reside at 416 North Lancaster with my wife Tara. Tonight, we are joined by several of our neighbors who strongly and universally oppose the application to subdivide, subdivide the undersized lot into two smaller properties. The adverse effect this subdivision would have on the aesthetics and beauty of our neighborhood cannot be understated. This section of Margate is one of the most beautiful sections on the island, which is why many of us have chose to build our homes here. This subdivision would forever alter the street and set a damaging precedent for further subdivision request of undersized lots. We are asking the board to consider other ramifications from subdivisions such as increased traffic, parking issues, and reduced natural space. The planning board, you guys, are tasked with great responsibility, in our opinion. The planning board, you guys, are tasked with great responsibility, in our opinion. The responsibility is to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods, to protect existing homeowners from overdevelopment, and to ensure Margate continues to be the special place to live that we all love.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a question.
Tom?
Yeah.
There's a question.
Question. Were you speaking for a group?
Well, I'm speaking for me and my wife. A lot of our neighbors are here.
So you're speaking for yourself?
Yes.
Wasn't clear.
Anyone else? In the back?
I know a lot of these people here. Mark Newsatter, 415-
Who?
I knew that was coming.
Mr. Newsatter, 415, what was?
North Lancaster Avenue.
And do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to be, you know, I'll just get right to the point. This isn't nothing personal. I like all my neighbors in my neighborhood. I've been there for 21 years. Pinky's one of my old neighbors. But, and I just think that, you know, Mr. Goldstein talks about it's not a density issue, but I think it really is because in my area, all the areas there, we've had about 15 new homes constructed in the last two to three years. And most of the new residents, they don't have one or two cars, they have three or four cars. So I think, you know, knowing that intersection and with the amount of traffic that goes through there, that's going to be, you know, pretty tricky. And I think the owners probably bought the property knowing the situation and the zoning, you know, when they entered into that deal. The other thing is, this opens up a big, you know, situation where you're going to see a lot of other people with 90-foot lots come in front of you. So that's pretty much my comment.
How big's your lot?
What's that?
How big's your lot?
My lot? I don't know how big it is. I got two.
About 120.
But they're both conforming, so.
I know. Next.
My name is Steve Pacioni. I live at 409 North Quincy Avenue. I grew up-
Stop.
Mr. Pacioni, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
I grew up at 8508 Wellington Avenue, where my parents, my mother still resides, and I go and check on, which is right across the street from the said property. Little history of that property, growing up at 8508 Wellington Avenue, the Bachelaries have owned that property for a very long time. And there, when the parents died, the kids wanted to subdivide the lot back then, and it was, they were told they could never do it. So anyone who bought the property moving forward knew what you were getting. As far as I'm concerned, like Mark said, I live on, currently at 409 North Quincy Avenue, and I have two lots on my street that are 90 by 80. So this will set a precedent. Four hundred block of Quincy Avenue has seen, like most blocks in Margate, skyscrapers built. Cars, garages underneath the house, six bedrooms. You have generational families buying these houses, and then their kids grow up and their cars, parking becomes an issue. So whatever this zoning planning commission can do to control the situation, because if this gets approved, then what's going to happen next? The 75-foot lots are going to be next up, so it's a snowball effect. So that's my personal background. That's my concern moving forward, and I appreciate everyone, you know, listening to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. I'm Wendy Blum, and I'm at 416 North Mansfield.
Ms. Blum, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I swear.
Thanks.
I'm just concerned with the additional house, you know, the variance, that it is going to become more congested, and there's going to be a problem with parking and cars. Already is a bit of a problem, like this other gentleman said, everybody has like more than one car, so that's one of my fears. My husband and I fear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Andrew Perone, 8510 Fulton Ave.
Can you spell your last name? I'm sorry.
Perone.
Oh, Perone, I'm sorry. Mr. Perone, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
No offense to them, they're good people and everything. I just want to comment on something that they said. He said that the lot was conforming as far as space. If it was, we would never be here in the first place. Second of all, he says there's going to be two small houses, and the picture showed 2,700 square feet. That's a pretty big house. I don't know why he keeps saying small, sounding like it's really, really small. Excuse me. 2,700 square feet is a big home. You guys really have it upon yourselves. The parking would be ridiculous. It's already getting ridiculous with the new houses that they built. There's barely any parking on Memorial Day, Labor Day, and all the other days. It's, you guys really are going to set a precedence with this, and the town is going to be destroyed if you put two houses on a small lot. I mean, it's going to really blow up to a point where it's going to be unmanageable. So you really need to consider if this is a good idea.
Thank you.
Marcia Orlando, 8519 Wellington.
Ms. Orlando, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I looked at the drawings and everything today, because they were brought up too, so I could see them, and it looks like I'm going to have less than 10 feet from my house to the new house that they're proposing to build. That's too close, as far as I'm concerned. That's claustrophobic. It's also going to ruin what the bayfront looks like. Those are single-family homes on the bayfront. To put, and those would be considered single-family homes, except they're going to be tall little, what I would say are row home-sized houses that they're proposing to build.
Just as a comment, though, they, they're going to move those sides in, so the, what you saw are preliminary drawings. They just said they will move those sides in, so they're much more than 10 feet.
Okay. And the other thing I would like to have explained to me, the 30-foot lot sits behind the 60-foot lot. What are they proposing? Are they going to move the bulkhead out? Is that what they're proposing to do? No, because I was going to say, I don't think you can do that, because that's wetlands there. Okay, right, I just wanted to make sure of that also. And as everybody else has said, the parking's going to become impossible. I don't even know where they're going to put cars for two houses. They hardly have enough room for their two cars, plus when their children come.
Right.
So I just don't know. It's going to become overcrowded. It's going to look ugly, as far as I'm concerned. And you keep talking, Ms. Eric here keeps talking about the visual, that there's going to be plenty of open air or open space. There's going to be nothing. Andy and Tom are going to have no view whatsoever of the bay if they take that away and put up a house, a four-story house, as far as I'm concerned. Because I know you don't count the garage as a floor, but that, you still-
Right, and we don't know what house is going up. I get your point, but we don't know what house is going up there, so.
It's just not going to be-
All right, thank you.
It's not going to be pretty. Thank you.
All right, we're going to close public portion. Would you read a motion, please? Sure.
Mr. Patterson? The property owners would like to make a statement as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Of course. Mr. Martin's going to swear you both in.
I wasn't trying to cut them off. You didn't raise your hand.
I wasn't swearing there, the appropriate time was.
I obviously know your names because you're the applicants, but just for the record, if you can state them.
Constance Oliver Martin.
And Kevin Martin.
And you're 8511 Fulton Ave. And each swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So first of all, the last thing we wanted to do is stir a pot here in the neighborhood. We had not known when we purchased our property, I don't think anybody selling a property would say, oh, by the way, you can't subdivide this, nor was it our intention. I mean, when we bought the property, I was in construction this my life. I had proposed tear down the one-car garage, put a two-car garage with a second floor, blow out the second floor, put a full dormer, make it the house we needed with the room that we wanted. It's a three-bedroom house, we have three children, three son-in-laws, four grandchildren, and a fifth on the way. We just need more space. So with that being said, we can't do that because of not having the elevation that we needed. So we started with our neighbor next door, trying to buy 10 feet from him, because he has an extra 15. Well, unfortunately, his garage sits on that, so we even actually proposed to have purchased the property and have it deeded over to us, but then he has informed us that his intention is to subdivide into a 65 and a 50. So we're going to have a 50-foot lot next to us, and then he's going to have a 65 on the other side. So with that, we have nowhere to go. We are perfectly willing to build a large house. I mean, actually, we thought it was in the best interest of the neighborhood because of the elevation of these, you know, we can put a third story over top of the already high elevation.
All the houses look high because you're starting at 13 feet.
And then we have the opportunity to build a third floor. We will do that, because, I mean, we can. So we just thought it might be in the best interest of the neighborhood, just, we had the largest-
Maintain their views and sight lanes and-
We had the largest lot on the block right now.
It's, this is being recorded, so one time, one, talk at a time.
Yeah, it's a 90-foot lot. It's the largest lot on the road. I mean, if you come down Wellington, they're all small lots. You come around, I mean, other than the house next to us on the 115, which is going to be a 50 and a 65. So that was it. We don't really, we certainly don't want to cause any trouble in the neighborhood. We don't want to ruffle feathers, and apparently, we have done a lot of that, so.
We have good neighbors. We're generally good friends with-
Speak into the microphone, please.
We have good neighbors, we're generally good friends with everybody, and by no means feel that you're doing us any disservice by coming up and speaking. It's good to hear your views. But to Connie's point, we will have the largest house in the neighborhood, and we're trying to do this in the best interest of our neighbors, who will still have some view-
Yes.
-and protect the look and feel of the neighborhood. And as far as parking, I believe that the restrictions now are that you have to have spaces for like two cars per the first three bedrooms, and then another car, so it would be off-street parking we would have for, we're required to have that. So I hope I've answered some of your questions, or some of the neighbors concerned with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Leo?
Sure. Roger, those items waivable, and there's an engineer's report, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, making notes on that.
Mr. Chairman, can we just have one quick second here, please?
Okay, Leo?
Yeah, we're going to take a motion in a second. We just got to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get through the engineer's report real quick, just so we have a full record.
Okay, I don't know if John wants to speak on this either, but based on the engineer's report and the review, Section 1A, I believe most of these items could be waived without any detriment as they mainly pertain to commercial sites. So item number one, buildings within 200 feet of the site, that can be waived. Parking space location shown on a minor subdivision plan, you will comply when you submit for construction plans. Driveway locations, again, that will be, I think that should be submitted on the plans. Location of drainage pipes, that's not needed. It's not shown, but there aren't, according to our records, there aren't any drainage pipes on the property. Location of natural features in tree areas, well, the bulkhead delineates the natural feature of the water, so that's, that could be waived. Location of existing utilities, including services shown on the minor subdivision plan, that could be waived. We have the water and sewer and gas lines there. Lighting included photometrics and landscaping, they will comply with landscaping, that item can be waived.
Was the bulkhead usable, or was that, did the bulkhead need to be replaced?
I don't know if that was the case.
I don't know. It's, if it is, it'll comply to current standards.
Okay.
Signage including details, again, that's mainly for commercial, that could be waived. Item number nine, refuse areas shown on a minor subdivision plan, again, that could be waived, that's not commercial. Soil erosion and sediment control plan, that will be required, because the site is larger than 5,000 square feet. Proposed site spot elevations, I would say you need that on the subdivision plan, that can be accommodated. Location of all existing and proposed utility drainage easements, again, this is not a commercial site, that's not required, and it's not a major subdivision. Copy of the protective covenants and deed restrictions applying to the lands to be subdivided, there aren't any shown. Again, the bulkhead delineates what can be built upon. That is shown. So those are the waivable items on Section 1A. B, most of these items will be addressed for the final completion and submission of the subdivision plan. John, I believe you can comply with all those items on Section B?
Yes.
General review, item C, again, most of those items, if not all, are a function of the updating the subdivision plan, and you can comply with those items.
Yes.
So that concludes the engineer's report. All other items will be addressed during any construction submission and zoning submission.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, it's a minor subdivision application with three C variances. So someone makes, needs to make a motion for minor subdivision approval to create the 245-foot wide lots identified as proposed lots A and B on the Ponzio Plan, and the variances are as follows. The lot area for Lot B is at 2,723 square feet, where 2,750 square feet's required. The lot width of both lots, Lot A, 45 feet, where 50 feet's required. Lot B, 45 feet, where 50 feet's required. As far as waivers, I'm just going to defer to what Roger said in his summary of the city engineer's report. Conditions will say anything in Mr. McCarnon's report unless otherwise addressed, anything in the city engineer's report unless otherwise addressed. And then the applicant also did agree to, and correct me if my wording is incorrect, but if an approval's granted, they'd restrict the two properties so that the setbacks will meet the current requirements for 50-foot wide lots, even though they're going to be 40-foot wide lots, which I believe are 8-foot minimum side yard setbacks, but a combined of 18. So eight on one side, 10 on the other. Does the rear change between 45 and 50?
No.
Okay.
It's 10 feet from the bulkhead, no matter what.
So noted, so that's the motion, and the second, and a roll call vote.
The combined lot width is the aggregate of 37% of 50 feet, which is 18.8.
18, okay.
I'll make the motion when we approve the application.
I'll second the motion. Tom Collins?
Very interesting case. Very well presented. You guys both did a very good job, but basically, your case was presented with a lot of what-ifs. What if they build on the house? What if this was that? There's a lot of supposition. We really didn't hear too many facts. I'd been a member of zoning and planning boards in Margate for over 22 years. I would say, what if the people came in and said, I'm going to build this house across these lots, and I'm going to have a buffer zone next to me? That sounds more like what we would have had back in the day, and that fits what Margate does. Right now, what you're asking us, and I respect what the owner said, but based on Margate City and what we're looking at, we have one nice, conforming lot. Why in the world would this board take and make two non-conforming lots? Doesn't make sense. You know, we don't want to create more- lots? Doesn't make sense. You know, we, we don't want to create more small lots. We're already burdened with some 25 and 35-foot lots in areas that we can't get rid of until we get built out. At this point, it just really doesn't make sense for us to vote for this, in my opinion. So, I vote no. Richard Patterson?
Well, I also think it's an interesting case, but for a different reason. It was interesting because I wanted to hear what the professionals had to say and how they could possibly justify doing this, knowing how this board feels and the intent of the master plan is not to have more houses. Margate's overcrowded, and I heard them. But these professionals aren't cheap. They know what they're doing. They're very familiar with Margate, and this is my supposition. But if those professionals told you that you, you had a chance of getting a subdivision, a non-buy-rate subdivision, which is, like I said, against, it, it hurts the neighborhood, I see nobody benefiting but you. So, in memory of Clem Wasleski, I vote no.
Michael Cristaldi?
I seem to have a little problem with it because I, I get in trouble saying four stories? Yeah. I get in trouble with that every, every month, so that's okay. But what we're going to end up with here is a 27-foot wide house, 43 feet tall. I don't think that looks like we want it on the bay. I have, I think it was well-presented tonight, but there's no way I can vote that yes with this. I vote no with Clem. Thank you.
Jim Gallantino?
I think Tom summed it up. You know, we're just opening the door for a lot of lots coming forward that are going to want to subdivide their lot. And the gentleman in the back said that exactly. He said, "What's next, 75-foot lots?" I think that's going to be insane. And that was one of my questions. I was going to ask the Martins if they had tried to purchase another additional 10 feet, and they did try, to due diligence to get it, but were not able. I'm sorry they weren't able to, but I look forward to seeing a big, beautiful house there. I vote no.
Margaret Gubernalti?
Well, I can appreciate the Martin's point of view and wanting to create a better neighborhood for their neighbors, thinking that was better than one big house. They also did a good presentation, Eric did, with eliminating non-conformities, using 50-foot setbacks. I think it does not create more air and light and open space. I couldn't justify that. And clearly, although they thought they were doing what was best for the neighborhood, the neighbors spoke and don't feel that way. And agreeing with Tom, we don't want to see smaller lots. Don't want to compromise our municipal land use laws, and I have to vote no.
Remy Pelosi?
I concur with the other board members. While the house that you can build may be a large house, you still have to have a certain amount of landscaping and trees and greenery and open space and light and air for your neighbors. And, you know, we don't want more houses on smaller lots. You know, Margate is totally overdeveloped, in my opinion, and we need more airspace, greenery, more parking, and those are things we can't change. So, I agree with everyone else. Nice presentation, but I have to vote no.
Joseph DiGeralamo?
The, the property, the plan for the two homes and the subdivision is not good for the neighborhood, and we need to follow the land, the land use laws that, just in this case, are not permitting that subdivision. And what was said by several, several of the other colleagues here on the board is exact. And while the work was very good done by the attorney, I think that one single home there will suit the neighborhood much better than two. I vote no.
Ron Grupo?
I agree with the other board members. The intent of our master plan is to have, you know, try and do something with these smaller lots, other than subdivide a bigger lot into smaller ones and make more problems for ourselves. I think if it's subdivided, it's going to end up with two big, small houses there, and that's not what our plan is, so I oppose the motion.
And Michael Richmond?
I don't see any hardship with the property. We can't set a precedent of having a 10-foot variance and two 45-foot lots when you're supposed to have 50-foot lots. I'm going to vote no.
The application is denied with zero in favor and nine opposed.
Next case is Midge Properties LLC, 9408-9412, Ventnor Avenue, Block 128, Lots 71 and 73, located in the CBD zoning district, seeking site plan approval and C variance relief for combined side yard setback, building coverage, building height, parking, and possibly others, in order to construct a new mixed-use office, retail, and residential structure. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Do you want to swear that I'm in?
No.
Who?
Their professional, their team?
Doesn't matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. The report is based on the application of Midge Properties, 9408-9412, Ventnor Avenue, Block 128, comprising Lots 71 and 73. It's within the CBD zoning district. Elevation 10, based on the effective firm. This is a substantial benefit variance and a major site plan. So, the ridge engineer's report also to accompany this application that the applicant will have to review and discuss. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief in the ordinances of City of Margate in order to construct a new mixed-use development, which is currently occupied by a commercial parking lot. The site is located within the CBD or central business district, which permits residential above the ground floors, but does not permit residential on the ground floor where commercial space or use is required. Mixed-use projects would be residential use above the commercial use and is subject to the multifamily or MF zone density requirements of 19.6 dwelling units per acre. Page two is the zoning chart, and as you can see, they comply with almost all the zoning requirements. Do want to highlight the variances needed? Actually, I want to discuss the, they do comply with the density. 19.6 dwelling units per acre is required. 18.6 dwelling units per acre, which equates to four units, is proposed, and it does comply since it's less than 19.6. So, they need the variances for the following reasons, for the following variances are being sought. Combined side yard setback, they need a combination of 10 feet, and they have seven feet. They are providing two, three and a half foot wide side yard setbacks. Three is a minimum required. They comply with the minimum, just not the combined. Building coverage, 60% maximum is required. 65.9% is proposed, so a variance is required for that. Again, the site is completely imperious today. Building height, 30 feet from lowest floor or 34 feet from the sidewalk on this commercial zone. 35.83 feet, where 35 feet 10 inches from the sidewalk is proposed. That's 1.1 foot 10 inches above, so a variance is required for that. Parking, they meet all the residential requirements for parking. Commercial, they need 26 spaces for commercial. Zero spaces are provided. And again, it's a little caveat. The commercial space, it's a commercial parking lot now, so they have 26 spaces today. They're not required to have any because it doesn't associate itself with a building. So, actually, they do need nine with this application, but they're providing zero for the commercial, which is not unique in the commercial zone. So, a variance is provided for that. However, the residential is, is being met with 12 spaces. Documents reviewed in Section 2 on Page 3. I discussed the variances required on Section 3 and Page 4. Waivers requested. The following items are waivers. Application A, Item 6, waiver to allow one site photo where four are required. Again, that, that's, there's only one photo to take, and that's at the parking lot. That's what they provide. Site plan 11D, waiver from providing location of buildings within 200 feet. Actually, the, the site plan that they have, that there are aerial photos that show all buildings within 200 feet. Site plan 1I, waiver from providing isolux, isolux lines for existing lighting. Again, it's a parking lot. They have, they've already provided that from the beginning. Those lights will be going away. I think that's a waivable item as well. Comments are as follows. I'm not going to read all the comments as the applicant has read the report, but my comments are as follows. The proposed uses are permitted within the CBD zone. The substantial commercial area on the ground floor provides enough justification for the residential parking below the residential uses without compromising the commercial space. Again, they're providing two individual commercial spaces, bookending the property with a driveway in between, and the, actually, the area, I believe, is 900 square feet per unit. Mixed use in AC zone is required to meet the density requirements for MF zoning development. They have met that requirement. The combined side yard setbacks are not being met, however, the side yard setbacks as a minimum are being met. The building height is a C variance as it does not exceed 10% of the allowable or exceed by more than 10 feet. So, that's a C variance versus a D variance. The street scape requirements will be met as per ordinance and details provided on the plans and in my discussions with the applicant for the last several months. The site is 100% imperious as it is today. The proposed commercial structures are similar in size and setbacks to adjacent commercial properties. So, I think from a planning perspective, it's going to blend in pretty well. Increasing in interior ceiling height should be considered to allow a higher floor as the street is ever raised, but that's not... There are not any easements shown on the property. It is two properties now. It will be combined into one lot. The highest decks in grade are at the second floor level and are not considered third-floor decks and will not be higher than a third-floor deck over the parking. The property fronts along Ventnor Avenue, which is a county road, so all county approvals are being, will be required, as well as this local approval from the City of Margate. No grass governorships are being located within the commercial zones. Consider adding a Second Street tree, and discuss the ground cover material along the sides. And again, I think they need to go through the commercial parking versus the residential parking. And I have indicated, I have added in my report the off-street parking requirements, and there's some little caveats in there that I think that the, would justify a variance provided, testimony from the applicant. And that concludes my report at this time with the right-to comment as we approve, as we move forward.
Did you get my note about the access on the left-hand side?
Yes.
You'll address that?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant, Midge Properties. With me this evening is a representative of Midge Properties, Mr. Frank Cassoni. Also, Rami Nasser is going to be doing the engineering for the project. Pete Weiss did the architectural plans. Mr. Cassoni is probably going to speak first, but I just want to give a little bit of a brief introduction. This is one of these projects that we would like to see more of, of course, encouraging the commercial development of what now exists as just a parking lot. Margate's master plan would be consistent with, or this would be consistent with Margate's master plan in that we have a property owner who wants to build commercial to maintain the commercial aspect in the CBD zone, but at the same time, building residential units above so that space could be used appropriately. And I guess that's now the new model, that you've got commercial beneath, the commercial can't go all the way up unless, you know, you had a much bigger building. But the best possible use that Mr. Cassoni could find with the property was the commercial at the ground level with residential above. As Mr. McLaren pointed out, we've been working on a concept plan for this for quite some time, not really knowing what to do with the property. Parking lot, as Frank will testify in just a minute, never really worked as well as he expected. COVID hit, and then it became a little bit of a different issue that it couldn't be used kind of at all over the past year or so, and it's just being used minimally now. So, the goal here is the residential above with parking for the residential, commercial beneath, which is real commercial, not the, what we would call throwaway commercial, you know, 100 square feet with 10 units of residential. I think we came up with a mix here that really works in conjunction with numerous meetings with the city to try to pin down exactly what the best use of this property would be, to not overburden that site, but also to give Mr. Cassoni the incentive to build so he can do the mixed-use project, and he is going to build it from the ground up, of course, as I'll testify in just a second. The issue with the parking, obviously, is always a big issue in town. There really isn't any retail parking for any other establishments along Ventnor Avenue in the zone. We wanted to dedicate the parking to the residential focusing on people pulling in and out, living there. And for the retail parking, it's almost like all the other retail establishments. The island, of course, is greatly underparked, so we're asking for a waiver for parking for the retail-only. Residential, as Roger pointed out, has more than enough parking. So, Mr. Manos would swear in. I guess Mr. Cassoni first, and then Mr. Nasser and Mr. Weiss to talk about the project. But before getting to the technical aspect, I think it's important that Frank discuss what he really wants to do here.
Okay. Just state your name and address for the record, if you want me to, if you want me to swear, Mr. Nasser, now, too.
I guess we can do it all at the same time. Makes more sense then.
Yeah, why don't you just go down the line? Is it?
In the microphone?
Can I spell your last name?
It's G U S, like Gus, and S O N I, like Sony. Gassoni.
Talk into the microphone, please. Thank you.
Except, and Mr. Cassoni, your business address or address for the record?
It's 314 North Cambridge Avenue, Ventnor, New Jersey.
Okay. And then, Mr. Nasser and Mr. Weiss, just name an address.
Rami Nasser, 1425 Cantillon Boulevard, Miss Landing, New Jersey.
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
And do, do the three of, do the three of you each swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just for the sake of kind of moving things along, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Nasser are licensed professionals in the state. I would ask if their credentials...
We've dealt with them. We accept their credentials.
Okay. So, Frank, you know, floor is yours. We've been working on this for a while. We've been waiting to get here for quite some time.
Yes, we have.
To tell the board what, what we plan to do and how we can get some new commercial built along Ventnor Avenue.
Okay. When I bought the property, my wife and I bought the property, we always intended to develop it. Honestly, we bought it very quickly because of the circumstances of the seller, and then we had time to kind of gather our thoughts and figure out what we were going to do with it. Temporarily, we figured we'd open a parking lot, and that would at least help pay the bills and the overhead and the taxes and things of that nature. We always did intend to develop it. I want to be very clear about that. So, the first year we opened it, we bought new equipment, put it in, and the equipment failed. The second year, COVID hit, so we were going to try to hire someone to actually watch the lot, and we never came down. Wow. We didn't interview anyone, and we left it. If anybody remembers, last year, we padlocked it, and we left it padlocked the entire summer. It never opened out a single day. This year, the company who had sold us the equipment promised that they could fix the equipment from the first year. Well, then, COVID hit, and they couldn't get us a single part. So, if anybody has gone by our lot all summer, they have seen custom-made containers over all of our kiosks, and they have never come off. We tried to take them off one day. They tried to fix them with some used equipment. It didn't work. So, we finally eventually hired someone. We subleased, actually, the deal to Target USA for the summer, and they put someone in there, and they put in a parking app. It did not work very well, and we only had somebody there two or three days a week. So, all day long, people were parking. Some nights, they were parking, and we knew that. It was just trying to make the best of a bad situation. We still can't get the parts to fix the equipment. They don't know when it's going to happen. But what it did is, during the COVID year, it made us accelerate what we intended to do anyway, which was develop property. And we had enough time to really look into, okay, what will the zoning allow? And being in front of enough city folks over the years, we've learned it's much easier to try to do what they'd like you to do and go along with the zoning the best you possibly can and get as close to what they want as possible. So, we set out, and that's exactly what we did. We hired Schaefer's organization. We hired Peter Weiss's organization. We hired Mr. Goldstein, who's represented us on other things in Ventnor before. And we just sat down and said, "Let's read the rulebook and get as close as we possibly can to make this as tangible for us and for the city as possible." And so, because of the mixed use, don't get me wrong, it would have been nice to have a three-story commercial building there, but honestly, it just doesn't work. And then the... And then the parking would become a whole other issue. And so we decided to just go with the CBD zoning as it was, which was mixed use, which is commercial on the bottom and residential on the second and third floors. So we sat down and actually, we met unofficially, I guess, is that a good way to say? In May, came in with several different plans for opinions by the city on what they thought would work the best and what was asking for the least and what kept in the flavor of what they wanted to see built in the middle of town. And that is the plan in front of your face, basically.
Frank, you're going to, I'm sorry. The goal here is for you to lease up the first floor, the two commercial units, and you're going to operate those like a limb, right?
Absolutely. We hope to keep those properties with perpetual income. And we do have some higher-end tenants, and actually, Margate has none of right now, that we think would fit in pretty well.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, we actually have some high-end tenants we've been talking to for quite a while.
Right.
Of course, they're not willing to sign anything until there's a building to go along with it. But we've actually worked out some of the specs. The, when we came in, in May, our commercial space was only about 700 feet. And honestly, that's about what we needed for the two tenants we were talking about. The city said, no, we'd like to see more commercial. So we tried to get as close to 1,000 feet per unit as we possibly could. I think we ended up with usable 932 per unit. But we're looking at keeping the units because we want perpetual income. That's why we bought the property to begin with. And so that's our, that's our goal, hopefully, to get this completed and put tenants in there, have the commercial spaces run it, and then, yes, to sell the residential units.
Well, I'd just like to comment before we go any further. In looking at your application, this is exactly what we're looking for as opposed to 10 housing units and 50 feet of commercial space that's not even usable. It's from the front, it's the entire property is commercial. I commend you on that because we do not mind residential on top of it. But so many of the plans we've seen, the commercial is basically useless. It's all with the intent of just getting the residential units. So I appreciate the plan you came up with because it sure meets what we're looking for.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Chairman, as you know, this didn't come up, you know, it wasn't, this didn't happen in a vacuum. Commissioners, Mr. McLaren, Mr. Gallantino, Mr. Manos, yourself, you know, we wanted to do something that works. I wanted something that works along Venter Avenue, that'll live here as well, to actually have something sustainable. And Frank, who's businessman, wants something sustainable, which is commercial that can actually throw off rent each month. Not a storefront that leads to nothing, but a real commercial establishment. And I don't think there's been one ground up that was built, as far as I can remember, that didn't attempt to, we call it the throwaway commercial. There was a throwaway little aspect here and they say, well, I'm doing commercial, but not real commercial. This is leased space, it's going to be condoed out, it's going to be operated like a business because Frank's a businessman. So we appreciate the input that the city had. I think I might have been on a couple emails, maybe a couple hundred emails between Frank and Roger, can we do this, can we do that? But we got to a point where, you know, now Pete and Rami's office to put the plan together that you have in front of you. So thank you for saying that and hopefully, you know, it'll look as good once it's built as it does on paper. Having said that, I'm going to ask Frank to have a seat, please, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And I'm going to ask Rami to walk through the site plan aspect of the application. And then Pete will talk about the architecture. And I think the board is probably going to have some questions as how the retail and the residential work together, how we're going to, you know, condo this out. We're sure Frank will be able to answer all of those. So Rami, if you don't mind, just walk us through the design your office put together as qualifying as a site plan under Margate.
Sure. It's, it's known as block 128, lots 71 and 73. The two lots will be consolidated part of this application. It's in the CBD zone. We are proposing to have two buildings with a drive aisle in between. The drive aisle will serve to allow the residents to park under the building. We are proposing three parking spaces per unit. So basically, you'll have 900 square foot in the front as commercial. On the second floor and the third floor, you'll have, each building will have two units. And in the back of the building, as you see on the plan, there's three-car garage for each unit. So we'll have ample parking spaces. They'll be able to access the spaces from the drive aisle between the two buildings. We are proposing the buildings to be three and a half feet setback from the property line. The minimum setback in the zone is three feet. We are a little bit above by six inches, but we don't meet the combined side yard setback. We're supposed to be 10 feet. But that's usually for a building that, one, one large building on a side, but this is a little bit different. You have two buildings, you have space in between. So we don't meet that requirement, so we're requesting a variance for that.
While you're, while you're talking about the parking down there.
Yes, sir.
We'd like to see a deed restriction for that center part, that there can be no parking that would block other cars.
That, that's no issue. I, I think that's important because if somebody, you have only 20 feet, if somebody parks, it's going to be difficult for anybody to park.
We've seen it where cars get blocked and whatever, so.
Mr. Gassoni, ten.
I understand, I wanted that to honor the record.
That's actually important for, for this aspect of this application. The second variance we are requesting is the building coverage. We're allowed 60%, we are 65.9, it's the minimum, it's only 5%. But that makes this project doable in a way that you have ample parking and usable space for commercial and the residential component.
Are three, are three spaces required per unit or you're just providing three spaces per unit?
My understanding, RSI standard requires two.
And you're providing three?
Three.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
And then just, Mr. Nassar, the site now, as Mr. McLaren Patterson pointed out, is now 100% impervious. That's actually going to get better by this project.
Right, we have, some of the impervious surface will be reduced, so there will be no need for any drainage or any mitigation for the site. Actually, we're getting a little bit better. It's not much, but just every bit helps actually when you look at these areas. Especially we have, the site is 9,000, 9,375 square feet, so it's all totally impervious at this point, see a pass for. So we are requesting a building coverage variance, but the site is covered completely. It's not, we're creating additional coverage from, increasing from 60% to 65.9%. And the last variance we'll be requesting for the building height, based on the elevation of the site, the sidewalk elevation, and where we are, we're allowed 34 feet from the sidewalk, we are 35.83 feet to the top, to the highest point. And that's not, the whole roof is not flat roof, just to the peak of it.
Just to the peak.
To the peak, yeah. It's not, it's not like you're taking, you're not taking a flat roof. I mean, this could have been a flat roof at 34 feet straight. This is not the case. This is just, portion of the roof will, will be above the allowed height. And that's basically what our application is.
Nassar, you testified, of course, to the board and prepared this plan along with Andy from your office, Mr. Schaefer. Do you see any negative that could possibly be associated with this site plan that the board would approve?
No, I don't see any negative. This, this plan promotes appropriate densities and concentration in the town. This plan is in accordance with the master plan. That's what the town decided what they want for this area. This plan complies with, with the master plan, so I don't see any detriment to it.
And to the extent you could possibly have a detriment associated, benefit associated with the plan far outweigh any such detriment?
Yes. You take a piece of property that's currently just a parking lot and you're improving that to create commercial and residential space.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nassar is going to stay during the course of Mr. Weiss's testimony, but I would ask him to turn the mic over to Pete now. And if the board has any questions, certainly, he's there to answer them.
I just want to mention that the residential parking, because you have parking above commercial, you're required to go to the garden apartment standard, which gives you the 12 versus the 10, but you provide for the 12. You're required to have 10, but if you use garden, you're required to have 12, you have 12, so you comply.
Can you tell me what a garden apartment is?
What's that?
Can you tell me what a garden apartment is? I'm just curious, because I've asked people for years and nobody could ever tell me.
It's a, it's a house with garden laundry hanging outside.
And apartments?
You drop pots on people, I, I don't know.
Why isn't that a, what's the other one, townhouse unit?
Townhouse, yeah. Don't be difficult, Peter.
So Pete, if you would, walk us through your architecture with regard to the units themselves, the bedroom count, along with parking. And a couple of board members have some questions about the garage doors, I'd have to answer those as well, so get started. To the extent anyone has questions about the garage doors, Pete can certainly answer them.
This was designed as two mirror image buildings with an access aisle down the middle, which provides access to the garages for the residences in the back. Each unit gets three parking spaces, has an entrance and an elevator. And the front is commercial space, which is a little over 900 square feet, which is certainly big enough to be viable for a business. Our idea on the front here, we have this garage door. The thought here was, you know, if this was, you know, the use is kind of undefined, but you know, if this was a, a retail-type use, we could open it up in the summer so you'd have some visibility from the sidewalk. There's certainly no intention of ever parking a car in there. It was just sort of to be able to open it up. Then in the winter, we'd have, you know, basically glazed garage door, which would take the place of what you, you know, maybe we'd just have like a storefront with a little moon frame and windows. So it's sort of a, you know.
Is the garage door all windows?
Yes.
See-through windows?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, was that not, yeah, so this was going to be a, you know, a wind, you know, glazed door, if you will.
I meant see-through.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Clear.
Could be clear, sure, yes.
I don't know why you wouldn't, I'm just wondering why that garage door is.
It's taking the place of a window, you know, it's the regular storefront windows, so. But then on the, the second floor, first floor, I guess, four dwelling units. They each have the living space and the bedroom. On the first floor, a deck, front and back. On the second floor, it's three bedrooms, two baths. So ultimately, they're all four-bedroom units.
Mr. Chairman, you might recall that one of the concerns that the city had, because this is along Venter Avenue, was the appearance of the upper units and how potentially somebody could make those units look better or worse. These are going to be condoed out and to the extent that we want to cooperate and make it easier to make those units restricted, the condo rules are going to be nothing hanging over the side, you can't put your beach towels there after a long day. The rules that will be enforced by the condo association, and ultimately, I suppose, the city could enforce them too, are going to prevent anyone from doing something on the exterior as it faces Venter Avenue, which is outside of what the city would like to see. In other words, the units are going to be condoed and maintained very well without, you know, a schlocky, short-town look. And that's important to the city, we know, and we'll make sure those get added to whatever condo docks we put together.
Yeah, we don't want to look like Longport.
Pete, the dumpster area in the back, would that be used for all the tenants and the store or is that just a store dumpster?
I was assuming that would be everybody, yeah.
Do you guys want to think about putting some across that? Because I can see other people dumping in there and people from Venter Avenue would probably use it too.
Off the street, you mean?
No, like a gate.
Oh, yeah, and I thought about that, but then the gate swings out into the driveway.
We only had, I expected to do that. Mr. Gassoni, it is, come on, Frank.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, we, we expected to do that because for that exact reason that, you know.
We're on tape, so you need to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yes.
I can hear you.
We already expected to put, you know, gates in front of it that would only have access by the people that live there or the store owners, so that they could open it and then lock it up again because it is theirs and they're going to be paying for it, obviously. So they also don't want everyone else helping themselves to their dumpsters. We put one on each building. And if I could just address the garage doors for a minute, that was actually my idea for a couple of reasons. One is because I think it's great in the summer. The one thing COVID did, I noticed, is it made Margate and Venter allow more to happen out on the streets. And it made it feel livelier and actually more small-townish. I wanted the stores to be able to do the same thing by being able to open the doors. And this way, you know, people can see in, even if they're not bringing anything on the sidewalk. Kind of brings the store out to the sidewalk or brings the sidewalk into the store. The other reason I did it is because I really, and Peter and I worked hard on this, but I don't know if he thinks we accomplished it. I think we did. I didn't want residential houses to look like somebody slapped this commercial pimple on the front of it. And it looks like two separate things. So when we designed the front of the buildings, we tried to design them so even though that garage door is really for the bottom floor for the commercial, as you pull up, it almost looks like it's just one major unit and it looks more uniform. And that was the reason we also did it. So when it came in, even though it's a storefront, it all goes with it, almost like you're looking at the front of a home. And we tried to keep it more residentially looking than some commercial concrete box.
Where's the space for the signage on the front?
To be very candid with you, I did not, I did not take that in consideration. I don't know how much signage you, we need.
Well, it could be in the window, no, it can't if the garage door is called up and down. Pete, I just, it just didn't seem like.
Is it concrete? Is it, is it commercial space concrete?
Yes.
Walls would likely be concrete because they're about to be footproofed.
Correct. That's where I was going. Okay, thank you.
So real quick, going back through the trash, is it going to be private collection?
Yes. Because it's also commercial and I don't believe the city picks up commercial property.
And again, I don't, I didn't want residential residences pulling out dumpsters to the curb.
Oh, no, 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 not at all, unless, again, depending, I will tell you, the tenants we're talking to are not going to generate a lot of trash. I can be very honest with you, I'll tell you that.
Now, they all say that.
One's a high-end jeweler and they're not going to be throwing out a lot of trash, their boxes aren't very large. Could it be instead the, the commercial or the residential bins that are used in towns? Yes, it could be. Honestly, I wish I could answer you right now. Depending on the commercial trash need, it's going to dictate more than the residential need, whether dumpsters are even going to be needed or not.
Fair enough.
But to answer Jim's question, starting this, if there is a dumpster, it'll be locked. No one's going to be coming across the street and, you know, people look for dumpsters all around town to throw their crap away. That won't be the case here, it'll be secure.
Even if it were containers.
Right.
I think it should be secured, but either way, it'd be very tangible.
All right, Pete, we cut you off, so please continue on to the design of the units.
On the exterior, the front is going to be basically brick with a metal roof. The, the units are set back some distance, which gives us the opportunity to have the roof here, but also creates a little privacy for the units because they're back whatever, it was 10 or 12 feet. So the whole building kind of steps back a little bit from the street. So the areas that are kind of blue on the drawing here are basically seater pressure, do something similar. And then the rear portion are going to be wood, wood and then for the lower portion. Oh, so getting back to the, this pertains to the height variance too. There's no, there's no required roof pitch in this zone, you know, we could have a flat roof. But we wanted to make it a 512 pitch to be consistent with the residential areas that are, you know, in the rest of the city. So because of that, you know, the top portion of the roof at the peak would be above your, the height limit of 34 feet. But that's just at the peak, but yeah, in theory, it would be just, you know, truncated, chopped 22 feet off the top and you'd be fine, but that's kind of silly. So it's one reason we're seeking a variance for height.
And just to follow up on that, internally, we talked a lot about the look of the project, the residential part from the road. And Pete's correct, we could have had a flatter roof, but we thought the variance was worthwhile to make it look like the other homes in Margate because that is your standard roof pitch. And I'll ask Pete this question, is there any negative that you could see to be associated with the roof if it were higher based upon what we've been discussing? And to the extent there could possibly be a negative, do the positives of keeping consistent with the other homes and the roof pitch throughout town outweigh any possible other negative?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey Pete, if you're going for a variance for it, why don't you just go to like a seven?
Well, we are.
It'll be a better look.
Restricted to 3.4 feet.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
And I don't know what the rest of the board members think, but I think a, a seven on that would look a whole lot better than a five.
That might create a D variance, huh? That might create a D variance and you don't want to do that.
You're going to 26 inches, Rob.
If we went to a 712, it would add a little bit more than a foot, so. I don't think we'd go any higher, but a seven would be.
It'd still be a C then.
Still be a B.
C.
C. C, I think we'd look a lot better with it, with a steeper.
I don't see a problem with it in that neighborhood. I mean, I'd object like hell if it was in a residential neighborhood, but in that neighborhood with a commercial like that, I don't think it's a problem.
I'm okay with it.
Another thing to keep in mind to. Another thing to keep in mind, too, this was, in another zone in the city, if this was a house, you could build thirty feet above the ground floor, you'd be thirty-nine feet.
Right.
It was still shorter than the building in Margate.
If you would like to ask for that, feel free.
Throw it in there. If you don't want to do it, don't do it. Just go for it.
No, Mr. Cristaldi, Mr. Gassoni said that.
I would like to have the flexibility to go higher, because it'd be very.
We'll ask for the seven, and you can always go lower.
Right.
He said, you know, it would look a lot better with it.
Well, and again, we were just trying to stay as close to rules as possible.
Chairman.
I mean, if you have.
Rich.
It's also better for wind.
Can we talk about the tree now, or later?
Yep, absolutely.
Additional tree.
Eventually, a lot of the.
What tree? Roger suggested another tree out front.
Let them, we'll talk about that later.
So just for the record, because we don't want to get off track here, based on Mr. Cristaldi's statement and what Mr. Weiss had stated, Mr. Gassoni said we would amend to request the additional height based upon the pitch, so, uh, thank you.
It's about another foot, you think, Mr. Weiss?
No.
Maybe do it.
Eric, just stay under three foot, four inches. That's it.
While Peter is figuring that out, we never got an answer to the sign question. If you're actually thinking of going up another foot, maybe the whole building should just shift the foot and leave a foot for signage, because you're, we're going to end up with problems with the business. They're going to be coming back or putting flashing lights, and you don't have, you have to have a provision if you're going to have a commercial property.
Yeah, we have the option of making the door shorter, creating some space above it.
I don't know. Well, may I ask the question? You're going to figure a sign out. That is no bearing on what we're doing.
As long as it can fly.
We want to go for the extra heights and have a look on the roof pitch. If you raise the building another foot, you're defeating that purpose. Yeah, well, they can put a neon sign there somewhere. There you go. When'd you get a three-sixteen scale? Do that on purpose?
We don't need an exact measurement on the roof. It just has to comply for a C variance and a seven-twelve pitch up to the C variance limit.
So it'd be three feet, four inches over what would be allowable.
Correct.
If the resolution included that language, we'd be okay with that.
And no more than seven-twelve pitch, so whatever, however it fits in there. And the sign, you guys worry about it, it just seemed weird to me that there was no space for it, so I would figure something.
I think Tom's got a good point. We have to figure that out sooner than later.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's only for your benefit, anyway. It's not something I want to jam down your throat. Okay, go ahead. You done?
I think that's a bad image, that is. I mean, obviously, we're here to answer questions, Mr. Nassar, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Gassoni, the board, you know, wants to go through anything, but that's basically in a nutshell. It's a site plan, variances for the commercial on the ground level, and then the waiver for the parking, and then the residential above.
I'd like Rami to discuss the lighting, please. I don't see any issue with the lighting, but I just want to get it on the record that.
The outside lighting?
Yes.
Most of the lighting, most of the lighting will be.
Be internal for security for the residents. Will be private, wall-pack units, nothing intrusive.
Okay. So the drive aisle will be well lit, but exterior from that.
I don't, we're not going to put lights on the outside of the building, be internally for the residents to be able to come in and park their cars.
Great. Also, you didn't address it, from the plans, it looked like there was no access on the left side of the building. If the neighbor puts a fence up, you got arbor biteys there, you can't get back on that side. What was your answer to that?
So initially, the landscaping was driving a little bit of that as well, so if the board would prefer it to have the plants gone to have more access, because they're probably going to die anyway, because if you think about where they're located, there's no light, there's really no way to get back there. It would be easier, but that, you know, we, again, Frank wanted to comply as much as possible.
But you're creating a hazard, though.
Well.
Sir, actually, as I said, we're just trying to comply with landscaping.
I, I understand.
If it were my call and what I would suggest, and we did actually at the beginning, would have walkways all the way back, because the other thing is, to give people, they could have at least an access out of the back of their garage then that way, just for an entrance door or an exit door. I mean, there's not any room to do back there, but at least.
Even if it's grass or those concrete things, the grass coming through.
It would allow to get you through the whole side of the building, and.
Have some greenery there, but you can't block it with trees, there's just no access.
Honestly, we would, I prefer.
But I, I'm saying, make it landscaping, but with grass and pavers that it looks green.
So.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
And Mr. Patterson, you.
No, I'm talking about where the grass grows through all the, yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's where water goes through.
The grass blocks, they're grass dangerous.
Any additional aisle, you know, was also good for emergency personnel.
I just think it was right. It wasn't, it wasn't safe.
Are you opposed to just having nice sod and grass?
No.
Okay. I just, because it would help, I still think, you know, aesthetically, there's some greens around there, but nothing a fight.
We're talking about the two sides, each end.
There's no cars there. Okay.
We would rest Mr. Patterson, and, uh, obviously, the board has questions we're going to answer them, so.
Well, while we're discussing the signs, just while you're here, looking at the sign ordinance, you know, I don't want to have you come back for a variance for a sign while we're here. I think you should ask for a variance to allow a sign to be attached to that lower roof, which is not permitted, if you need it.
If we need it, that would be helpful. I'd like to try not to do that. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I would like to try not to do that, for, again, for the aesthetic purposes, but Peter and I would have to readdress that, and honestly, I apologize, I didn't think of the signs. I don't even know what the sign ordinances require me to do in this town, so I want to be very honest with you. Yes, that's my first answer when I stood up today. We could do something on the front of the bottom metal roof, but if we can do it somehow on the masonry, I'd rather do it there to be very candid with you. I just think it would look better.
I, I agree with that. All right, let's, it's, it's up to you.
No, I would like, if we can add, if we have no other option, then yes, I would like to add that to our list for the roofs to be able to handle the sign, but I'm going to say my prerogative is not to do that. I just think it'll take away from the aesthetics. So if we have the space to do it on the masonry walls, and we may, again, I don't even know what the sign ordinances are, so that's why I don't know what's the kind of space we're talking about at this time.
Here's your man.
That we need. It may be, you know, realigning the front or shrinking the overhead door, because we can do that also. Again, I never took the sign in defect, to be honest with you, and I'm not going to sit here and say I did, because I didn't.
And what about trees?
They, they're providing for one street tree. As per the streetscape, I think they should add a second one just to be symmetrical.
Fine.
That's it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to open up to the public. Anybody has any questions or comments? Raise your hand and let me know. Public portions closed. If there's nothing further from the board, would you?
I, I just want to.
I'm sorry.
Confirm that I've known Frank from Venter, and I think it was the day before he even bought this property, he did say, I am going to develop this property, so that he's, he's one of the most straight-up, honest, conniving developers I've ever met.
Well, thank you.
I'm kidding. Frank's a straight-up guy, and he, he did take the time, and we met as a subcommittee and went over this. There was a lot of back and forth, and the one thing that the city really wanted and the board really wanted was compliance with density, and they, they did, you know, because we were getting reports, oh, you could put eight units in there. No, you can't. And so this is the final product, and I, I'd say it's a, it's everything that we saw before.
Roger, once again, anything we have to address in the Rent and Environment Report? You know, they request certain waivers from some of these.
We can go through that really quickly. Section A, major subdivision, major site plan, requirements, current survey of the property, I believe the existing conditions plan, it's in the plans, is a survey. That item is included. Key map at a scale of one inch goes four hundred or less. Item six A, I'd say that's a waiver. They do provide key maps on the site, and actually, that, that's like a state standard requirement, and it's not up to date, in my opinion. Location of existing watercourses and other natural features, again, that's a, that's a waivable item. The entire site's within a flood plain, so that item is waivable, or it's provided. Location of all structures within two hundred feet, again, the aerial photos that they show on the cover sheet of the plan, they comply, or a waiver has been requested, actually, I'd say, yes, that waiver can be granted. They do provide that information. Stormwater management plan, again, the, that's not applicable in this instance. They are reducing, or they're not increasing any runoff. Circulation plan, again, with only four items or four units on here, this is no different than a, I think that's a waivable item also. I mean, it was a parking lot with twenty-six spaces, now it's four units. Location and description of all proposed signs, including details, again, we just went over the sign. They will comply with, with all the requirements. They may want to have a marquee sign above the doorway, that's up to them. Copy of such guarantees, covenants, master deed, I don't think there are any as part of this application. Landscape, and they show it on the plans, they show the streetscape, so they beat that item. List of all required licenses, permits, or other approvals. Again, you will need a, whatever permits you need for soil erosion control, you will get, you'll need county approvals. Traffic impact statement, if required by the board. I don't think the board has any concerns going from twenty-six spaces to twelve. Section B, application has been reviewed, blah, blah, blah. Following information has not been provided. Again, these are basically redundant, not to regurgitate everything that was said before. I believe waivers can be addressed for most of those items or provided. Item number B six, a letter from the fire chief stating that the water lines and fire hydrants are adequate for fire protection. Again, that's going to be, that's going to fall under the construction code requirements for all fire suppression as required for the commercial space and the garages. I think that item will be met as a condition. And general review, I'd say that all these items could be waivable or have been provided, and you will comply.
We concur.
I have a question for Roger before we vote on all this. The garden style you're saying is requiring by code three versus two parking spots?
The, yes.
Technically. So is that something they can get a variance on?
They don't need it, they meet that requirement.
I'm not asking that. Is that something they can get a variance?
Yes.
Yes. So wouldn't it be more practical for this here to take one space, since you have extra, and they're not going to be used most of the time, and give one to each of the resident of the commercial units, even if it's for the owner?
We, we discussed that early on when we met, and we decided that you're going to create a conundrum between who's going to use that space, who gets dedicated this space versus that space, and actually, the.
It'd just be one for each store, is all I'm saying.
I'd say the residential portion of it is more important than the commercial portion in this.
But it's not going to be used.
Yes.
Weekends. So you're going to have empty spaces, and then you're going to take spaces on the street more for the.
Well, the ordinance does permit.
Doesn't make sense.
The ordinance does permit cross-use of those parking spaces.
You know, you know what I'm trying to say?
I do.
And if you're going to get a good jeweler or somebody, the jeweler himself is going to want a space right behind his door, because he's going to carry jewels in, you know? I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to giving that variance. I don't know whether you want to do it or not, but.
I just fear that we don't have enough parking, because even, it even came up in the last hearing. Everyone always concerned about how many people are actually coming to the house. You know, if somebody's got an older child or this, that, you know, all of a sudden you have that third car. So in our earlier meeting, obviously, we only have so much space to utilize. As Mr. McCornet said, we did discuss that with them and actually went the way they preferred us to do it, which was make sure the houses are fine, and commercial, your two more stores, and then whole strip that almost has no parking as it is.
And I think we also took away those two spaces so we could make the stores bigger and realist.
You did, because we did actually have.
They had that.
Two.
But we wanted the stores to be bigger.
And, and also, if you dedicate those two spaces, they would have to be ADA compliant.
Okay, move on.
Okay. And then for that drive aisle, in, in the middle, we're going to leave, we're going to do a deed restriction, so no one can park there, or just a condition?
Easement?
I'd say you want a deed restriction on that. There's been issues with other developments where people are just parking, and they can't have access to their own garage, because people are parking there.
Okay, you're okay.
Instead of relying on their own bylaws, this way, the city has a tool to enforce.
And, uh, is this a major site plan?
Yes.
Okay. So someone needs to make an application for, it's a major site plan, so it's preliminary and final, major site plan approval. There's several C variances that go with that, and I'll summarize those. The combined side yard setback is seven feet or ten feet required. Building coverage there at sixty-five point nine percent, or sixty percent is permitted. The building height, thirty-four feet from the sidewalk is the maximum permitted. The applicant will stay below ten percent of that, so anywhere three-point, less than three-point-four feet above that, they're going to go. So I think it, I think the statute actually says if you're exactly ten percent, that triggers a D variance, so just be below ten percent. For the parking, for the commercial, nine spaces are required and zero are proposed. We will put a variance in there that sign, one sign will be permitted if needed by the applicant.
Two.
One sign for each commercial building on the, the lower roofs. The waivers from the engineers' report Roger summarized, so I'm not going to go through those. There's also three checklist items from our ordinance, general submission items that, that are listed in Mr. McCornet's report. The conditions I have noted, this will be subject any, as, as any approval, subject to any other necessary outside approvals. Number two, they're going to consolidate the lots. Number three, they'll provide for a deed restriction. There can be no parking in the, in that middle drive aisle area. Number four, the condominium docks will have some sort of prohibition against, and you can get the wording right, subject to our approval, but you can't hang stuff out the front, and it's, it's kind of, I don't, I don't see that being a huge concern, but there should be something in the condominium docks that, that address that. Whether they're just dumpsters or containers, they'll be in some type of secured off air.
Fully enclosed.
Gated, gated, fully enclosed gated area. I have, they can go to, up to a seven-on-twelve roof pitch, and then the two, the two sides of each property shall remain free of any trees or shrubs, should be pretty much unobstructed with some type of landscaping going back. And then they're going to add a second street tree. And then anything else in the two reports, being Mr. McCornet's and the city engineers, and any, any representations the applicant made during the course of the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Tom Collins.
Well, I guess it looks by these plans that Paradise is coming back, and we're tearing down a parking lot. It's a very nice project. I give you a lot of credit for it. Might be a little aggressive, we'll see. I would rather see this than somebody else coming in trying to mess it up even more with eight units or 10 units. I think it fits the neighborhood. It's a shame we couldn't provide some more parking or elevate even higher, so you had more parking, but you can't do it in this neighborhood. I think it'll make a major improvement. I don't see any negative impacts on the neighbors or the neighborhood, and I think it's going to be a positive trend for the city of Margate going forward for that area. So, I vote in favor.
Thank you.
Richard Patterson?
We do not want to lose any more commercial space in the city, and I think this is really something that fits what we're looking for, and it really is a burden and, and hard discussing with developers what they want to put in, and which doesn't really meet what we're looking for. This one does. I don't see any detriments here. I think it's great for the neighborhood. It's going to look nice. You're going to have good, decent-sized retail in there. Not a real estate office, right? Can we put that deed restriction in there? So, I absolutely vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
I think a lot of effort was put into this, and I think, I commend you guys on putting it together and pulling it off, and I do agree with you Frank on the sign. I think it's a lot classier looking if you stayed where you want to go. I vote yes on the project. I think it's good for the town.
Jim Galantino?
I just was amazed that, that they put a parking lot and it was never used. I mean, I rode by on 4th July weekend, there's no cars in there. I'm like, why is this guy got a parking lot? And he had all those fancy machines in there, and he never did anything. I couldn't believe it. The, definitely the positives outweighed the negatives. It's going to be an asset to see the two commercial spaces, and we're going to have a drawer. Tom, somewhere to buy jewelry. I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalte?
I think this is a really nice project. I don't think it was, I think there was a lot of thought that went into it. They worked with the city. It is not overdeveloped. The variances are de minimis. I see no negative impact. I think it's, it fits into the neighborhood really well, and I vote in favor of the project.
Remy Pelosi?
I like it, and I concur with the reasons given by the other board members to approve this.
Joseph DiGirolamo?
Glad to see that you spent time in talking with the, the city about how to make it work and get everything that we think that we want, we need in the city. I think it made this easier for everybody all around, and the, the variances are de minimis. It's going to be a great project, and thank you for doing it for the city. I approve.
Ron Grupo?
I also agree. It's a great project. You guys put a lot of time and effort into it, and it's going to be great. Don't tell my wife it was a jewelry store in there. I'm going to tell her it's a pizza shop, and I also approve the project.
And Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I think it's a great asset to the neighborhood. I like the, I like that garage door concept. I think that's really hip, you know, hip.
Well, you're a hip kind of guy.
I approve.
Yes.
The application is approved with nine in favor and zero opposed.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay.
Nice people.
Next case is 17 North Mansfield LLC. 17 North Mansfield Avenue, block 213.01, lot 3, located in the S-25 zoning district, seeking C variance relief for pool heater location and possibly others in order to relocate the pool heater. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied.
We're missing Jimmy, but-
Huh? All right, we'll wait till he comes in. Can you swear Roger in in the meantime? Oh, no, you're already sworn in. Go get him. Are you ready, Mr. Galantino? All right, Roger. Okay. My report is based on the application of Robert Breaker, 17 North Mansfield Avenue, block 213.01, lot 3, within the S-25 zoning district. Effective firm, elevation nine. They can go nine feet above grade for a garage, which they did at this application. It's deemed complete. It's a substantial benefit variance. There is no hardship at all with this case. Background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city of Margate in order to permit relocated pool equipment. I believe it's the filter, the heater, and other pool equipment, not just the heater, from the approved location to an unapproved, non-compliant location. The pool equipment was relocated without consent from the city, and the zoning chart is on page two. And I'll just go with the variance being requested. There's a side yard setback to pool equipment, whereas a minimum side yard setback is 10 feet, and 8.25 feet exists and is proposed. It exists because that's where it was installed without permission. And some of my comments, the pool equipment was not shown on the Asbeld survey, so it was presumed that it was in the garage. It was out of sight. The pool equipment location has changed without permission or approvals from the city. It was pointed out to us, and we had to rescind the CO. In Margate, for single-family and two-family construction, side yard setbacks are purely based on the lot width, and a lot less than 50 feet width as a required minimum side yard setback of five feet, eight feet, and 10 feet added. It's widest. Pool equipment won't fit in any side yard setback as a minimum. The intent of the ordinance of a 10-foot setback is to have pool equipment located in the rear lot, in the rear yard, not in the side yard because it does not fit. I cite section 175 dash 33D, five subsection D, swimming pools, hot tubs, and spas. 5D machinery ship ha- shall be housed, and an noise-reducing structure shall be setback at least five feet from the rear and 10 feet from the side yard property line. We do allow a caveat, if you have a detached garage that doesn't meet the setbacks, that pool equipment is permitted to be in that without meeting the side yard setback because the garage is a sound rea- a permanent sound-reducing structure. And that's it for this report.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Members of the board, my name is Chris Baylant, and I represent Robert Breaker, who's here with us tonight, for 17 North Mansfield Avenue, block 213.01, lot 3. You're going to laugh when I say this, this is a home built by Oasis. Mr. Breaker purchased the home from them, knowing nothing about the non-conforming pool equipment. This is how it was sold to him, unfortunately. The pool equipment is eight point, or eight feet three inches from the, in the side yard rather than 10. It's about a foot and a half, a little more than a foot and a half, non-conforming. But where it's located on the side of the house is completely opposite of the neighbor's pool equipment at the same location.
Do they have a permit for that? Do they, have they have approvals for that?
There's a neighbor?
Yes.
I suspect that he does.
They don't.
The na- the neighbor doesn't?
Correct.
So, the neighbor's just conforming. There's 23 feet-
Neighbor's is not conforming.
There's 23 feet between the houses.
I'm talking about their pool equipment.
Okay, that I'm not aware of. They, they have a CO for the, for the property. We're talking about the same neighbor? The gentleman that's here tonight? My point is, Mr. Patterson, this gentleman played no role in that. I mean, he didn't, he didn't collude with Jeff Calendar. He didn't collude with Mr. Obelens to move the pool equipment. The pool, the pool equipment was moved without his knowledge. But let me, let me suggest this. It's in a location that's better than any rear yard location on this property could be. A rear, a rear yard location for this pool equipment would, would disturb neighbors to the rear, neighbors to the side, because that's an open area. Where it is now, a foot and a half short, is between two walls. It's, it's really the optimal location on the property. Not creating any hardship for any of the neighbors around there. I'm, I'm not going to tell you Mr. Breaker's story. I'm going to let him tell you the story. And hopefully you're, you'll understand that not only did he have nothing to do with it, it's actually in a better location where it is now than hanging off the back of the house.
Thank you.
Mr. Breaker, just state your name and address for the record, and I'll get you sworn in.
Sure. Robert Breaker, 17 North Mansfield, Margate.
And Mr. Breaker, you swear affirm the testimony. You're about to give the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, in November of 19, I contracted with Oasis for him to build me a home at 17 North Mansfield with a swimming pool in the backyard. That was candidly the most important part of the house to me, the swimming pool. I never owned a shore house. I said I never would buy a shore house. If it didn't have a pool, I hate the beach, so I buy the shore house with the pool. A year and a half later, in June, or maybe the end of May, the house is, is getting ready. Jeff Counter calls me three or four days before, before we're going to closing, and he tells me, "Rob, I have really bad news for you. The, the CO we got is rescinded because the pool equipment is only 8.25 feet away from the side neighbor, and it has to be 10 feet." And just to back up a little bit, I mean, I asked a lot of questions as this year and a half was going on. I wanted a great liquor bar in my living room. I wanted a big screen TV, things that I cared about. I never asked like where air conditioning ducts were going. I never asked where air conditioning units were going. I never asked where pool equipment was going. I just trusted my builder. I mean, I don't know anything about building. I never asked those types of questions, so I just assumed he would put it appropriately. So, then fast forward to four days before closing, I'm told that, that it's too close to my neighbor. At this point, I am literally into buying furniture for my house that would already been installed. Oasis allowed me to move some furniture in, and I already had bought stuff that's actually still coming, but I mean, I mean, literally six figures of furniture that, I mean, a lot of money for me that I, that I spent for this house that I was super, super excited for, and my kids were super excited for, and I had a choice four days before closing. Do I literally like eat several hundred thousands of dollars of furniture, this year and a half that I put into my life to get to this shore house that I loved and that I was excited for with the swimming pool and my kids, and everybody's going to be so happy? And then, I'm told this, it's like 72 hours, I had to decide, do I potentially lose all this money, or do I get a, a temporary CO? And I'm told it should be fine, and we come to this variance hearing. Well, here I am, and I am before you really seeking, to me, justice. I didn't do anything wrong. I didn't know one thing about the pool equipment, and then I'm told that my builder put it in the wrong spot. So, that's really all I have to say about what has transpired up until where, where it is. I can tell you, this photograph, I don't know if, if you all have it in the package that's, that's sitting up here, but it's, it's, it's in page six. It, it has a picture of my home and my neighbor's home. And his home is on the left. His is a little, was just completed, but you see my pool equipment where the arrow is, and his pool equipment is to the left on top. His is just a little bit further back in, in time, so it's, it, his isn't, his, literally today looks exactly like mine with the same white railings. Everything looks exact. So, that's my pool equipment, that's his pool equipment. And, and just to back up a little bit, these homes are literally like twin homes. I mean, I didn't ask for it, but that's how, how, and my, and my lovely neighbor, Mr. Cohen, is here today, and we basically have the exact homes. They're white homes with the same siding, the same railings, the same pool in the backyard for each of us, the same pool equipment. It's like twin homes. I mean, it looks nice ultimately because they're twins and they're right next to each other, but you can see that in this area, his pool equipment is by definition touching his house. So, his pool equipment, which is the same equipment that I have, is within inches of his home. Mine is further from his home, which would make the same noise his makes, which is minimal, I can add, but, but it literally has to be further from his. His would make more noise touching his home than mine. And Mr. Cohen, who's a lovely man, is, will, will tell all of you that he doesn't mind it staying here. So, the only person that this, this problem that I didn't do would, would potentially bother would be my neighbor right here in this photograph, and he's here tonight to tell you that he doesn't mind. If it is moved to the back of the house, it will create a problem for three other neighbors of mine. Ones that, ones, there's two houses that sort of overlap behind my pool. Both of them would then start hearing pool equipment, and my other neighbor, whose house kind of is a little bit diagonal on the other side. So, now three people will be made to hear potentially noise. I mean, it, it's not terrible, but it's noise that they don't hear. I mean, they, they've told me that they're fine with, with it. They don't hear it. I mean, I get along great with, with this neigh- with these neighbors, and nobody minds where it is. The three that would be impacted if we move it, and certainly Mr. Cohen now, who is the only one who potentially could mind, and he doesn't mind, and he certainly will be here tonight to tell you that it's his intention to always live here. He wants to deed his home to his kids, his grandkids, and, and we would be the families that are going to be there forever. I mean, I want to be here for a long, long time. He wants to be here for a long time. It's less than two feet. It wasn't my fault. My builder did a bad thing, made a mistake, and I just would be here tonight to ask to not punish me, please, for his mistake.
But Mr. Co- Mr. Breaker, Mr. Cohen's air, pool equipment is compliant.
Correct.
Yours isn't. Yours was compliant. It got moved.
It was approved in a compliant place, and it was moved.
That's, that's my understanding, but I certainly, I never knew where he was putting it. I never, I never asked the question.
So, if he put it behind the house, it becomes compliant, and then there's no, you know, there's no reason to be here.
Well, it be- it does become compliant per, per the laws, I understand it, but it then would bother three other homes. Mr. It would become an eyesore for Mr. Cohen, who will tell you tonight that he doesn't like the look of it on the back of my house, where he's going to be sitting in his pool, looking at my now pool equipment, which the only spot is kind of overhanging my pool. I mean, it, it's a negative to me also. I mean, I, it doesn't look as, as, as nice in the back of the house as well. So, I mean, I don't like the look of it there either, and, you know, I, I'm just here sort of as the, the person that got the brunt of, of somebody putting it without ever advising me.
Why did he do that?
Why?
Yeah.
We don't know. You didn't tell him.
Yeah, but why would you do that? I don't understand.
But we've had cases where you're coming in, not you, but your builder and architect, where they do something and committed to ask for forgiveness rather than for asking for permission in the first place, and this isn't the first time.
I can explain that, Mr. Breaker.
The, the only other point that I guess I-
I, I understand you're the one getting hurt here, but- But he's never asked questions. I would sure as hell go after my lawyer, my, not my lawyer, after my architect and my builder. Go ahead.
I guess that my only other point that I just failed, failed to, to address just was when I was listening to the other two cases before where, where you all certainly have, certainly are interested in, is this going to set a negative precedent? I mean, I've said, I learned that tonight, that that's one of the big facts that, that you all rely upon and, and consider. And here, I don't believe it would be created, creating a negative precedent because it is a very unique situation where it's two twin homes that are literally identical, si- sitting next to each other, where my pool equipment and his pool equipment are literally facing one another, where mine, just they built my home 1.25 feet closer to the property line than his, for some reason, I don't know what. But it would be something that would be totally factually different for any future potential hearings that you all may have, where here we have twin homes, where, where they're, they're identical, and the, the, the two homeowners don't mind.
But you like the size of your home, correct? The size of your home.
I do like it.
Right, and if the pool equipment was where it should be, they could have made the house smaller, but it's better for the builder to make a bigger house and then fight this later.
The pool equipment was in, in the garage area, and on the side, wouldn't have affected the setup.
I'm saying if they had it on the side of the house, the pool, the house would have had to been smaller.
And it, it is setting a precedent. There's already a gentleman in the audience that wants to see how your case proceeds to go forward with the pool equipment he wants to put in that location. So, it's, what's that a precedent?
And my only point just to that is that these, these are two twin homes that are identical to one another, where he has a pool, the same pool equipment, and that's how I would certainly make any, anything factually different between the potential and other scenario.
I mean, you have to take into consideration the location. It's about a foot and a half short, but it's in a location that's better than the alternative. It's better than hanging off the back of the house.
Well, Roger just showed me a location behind the house against the house that wouldn't bother the other neighbors.
That's open up everybody else's backyard. This is not. This is-
Well, it's not against their backyard. It's against his house. It's not even close to it. You're going to have something noise around it anyway.
No, Mr. Patterson, this bounces off the side of the neighboring house. If it's in the backyard, it's an open area. It's an open area next door, still area next door, still area in the back.
Right. But it's, it's further away. Right, that's where I had my pool equipment in the backyard where the neighbors could hear it, but it was 10 feet away.
It's 23 feet between the houses, which, which I could say meets the standards of the ordinance at 7:10. It's actually three feet. I mean, that's, that's the idea. I mean, there's, there's more than 20 feet between the houses. They're supposed to be 10 and 10. I mean, this, this is not the type of case where you penalize this gentleman for what's happened. If it was egregious, that's one thing. This is not egregious. This is almost de minimis.
I, I kind of disagree, and not on his part, but on the, not on his part by any means. He's the poor guy that's stuck in the middle here.
Right, and don't penalize it for what Calendar ma- Calendar may have done. I mean, that's-
Why is Calendar not here?
For good reason.
Why is Obelens not here? Oh, there he is.
Chris, quick question for you. Where are the pool equipment showing on this plan?
Yes.
What's on the other side of the foundation wall there?
Same as the inside, on the plan?
On the plan, it shows garage over this way. Is that? No. What's on the other side of the wall that the equipment is against?
Oh, you want to put it inside. You want to put it inside.
What's on the inside of that wall?
Yeah.
Asbeld survey?
Oh, that's an enclosed, that's an enclosed veranda. Some of these in the house actually, it's, the house is, that's the veranda that has a roof over it, huh?
Another- Another problem that makes this questionable is it was hidden. The Asbeld survey didn't show it. They moved it and didn't show it.
Patterson, I didn't understand all that. I'm just, I'm here to defend this guy.
So, Jimmy, being that it's outside the building, it doesn't have to be at that elevation, correct?
If it's outside the building, it's not connected to my building. I don't care about it.
So, it, DFE? So DFE?
Yeah, if it's outside, it's off of its box.
Well, it could be a B of E almost, right?
It's off the building and it's not on my elevation, so I don't I don't care about it.
So it could be lower. If it was in the backyard, it could be lower.
Yeah, it could be.
Which helps with the sound.
Well, it can't be lower, it's gotta be in the back of the house, which is
Roger's saying away from the house, like in something, I don't know. But it has to be to ten feet.
Has to be to ten feet.
It'll be in the middle of the pool.
You're saying the ten in the ordinance, the ten in the ordinance is not to have in the side yard. That's really not, I mean, you allow them in the side yard. You got something out of midsection.
If you have more than ten feet, right.
You got a midsection, I can understand that.
But in the rear yard, your required rear yard setback at this property is sixteen feet, so you presume that the rear yard setback that it behind you is sixteen feet, so there's thirty-two feet versus eight feet.
That's shower and steps, that's too far away.
As I as I have spoken to builders and I don't see there's any other potential place that it could fit.
Well, your architect designed another spot. Ask him right there. How come he didn't? How come it's not in the designated spot that was approved?
John says he doesn't know why Callender moved it. It was not part of that, it was not part of that process.
I I don't know. I've never spoken to the architect. I just only dealt
There are other options. This is not the only option. So I don't want to hear that.
So we think this is a good option.
I think it sets us up for bad tidings in the future.
You're not supposed to look at precedent, Mr. Breaker. Every case stands on its own.
I understand that. I understand that.
That's all we have. Thank you. You have something else, Ralph?
No, Mr. Cohen?
We have nothing to comment.
Well, that's one public comment, which is now open. Please state your name and address and be sworn in.
My name is Scott Cohen, nineteen North Mansfield.
Mr. Cohen, do you swear affirm the testimony, Ralph Gibb will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm in the same position as as Mr. Breaker. I bought the home thinking that his equipment's gonna be over here across from mine. They want to put it on the second floor in the back of the house. So when I'm in my pool or I'm enjoying this house that I I worked so hard to 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 be able to buy, and now I have this situation, that's not fair to me either, but I understand it's not your problem. I get it clearly. The problem is between the builder and him and I, but we're both in substantial investments in something that we thought we were getting, that we were going to be able to enjoy.
And I may have misspoke. Have you had your final inspection?
I I I have a mortgage and I wasn't able to get a mortgage until I got the final CO. I have a final CO. It was given to my bank.
Mr. Cohen, there's
I may have misspoke.
There is avenues to take to correct the sound. You just have to get a somebody who's engineering can build you a structure to contain the sound of that device. We haven't seen it.
That's not my, that's not my my thing. It's a visual thing is more, I don't care about the sound because I have the same equipment. I'm worried about the visuals of it where I was told that it may have to be put if there if there's gonna be a change, and that's not acceptable to me. And then I'm gonna have a problem with my builder and I'm gonna end up. And I know, again, I said it's not your problem. I'm clear on that.
Same builder?
Same builder. Okay? But then now it creates problem for two of us. And I ordered furniture, but it didn't come in yet. It didn't come in yet. I don't have a lick of furniture in there, but I've paid for it already.
Stay next door.
I could stay at his house. No, but but it be it creates a hardship. That's why I came here. Listen, I'm gonna be in my office at six o'clock tomorrow morning in Philadelphia and I'm still here, okay? And I'm already here for me, okay? I like my neighbor, but I don't want I don't want that to happen if there's any chance that it doesn't have to happen. And that's all I can say. And I understand it's not really your problems because you're not the one that did it, but your decision impacts me as much as him, and I got stuck with something that I didn't know about either.
Can I make a suggestion? I'm a builder. We just did a house for the pool and I I thought, and the way we did it, we used solid walls because I thought for pool equipment, that was the requirement. This is
Sound reduction.
That's just an open railing, right? Around around his pool equipment?
But perhaps you do sound attenuation around the other
Huh?
Perhaps you do that. Sound attenuation around
Right, right, right.
That's not
Which I thought was cut.
No problem.
But that's not what I'm I'm worried about. What I'm worried about is if they move this equipment
Yeah. We know, we get it. But be honest with it, just so you know, the pool equipment was supposed to go in the back, so, you know.
That's why I said, I'm I'm not saying this is your problem. It's not your problem.
Right.
It's my problem, but I didn't pick and choose this problem. This problem was given to me unfairly and
Mr. Cohen, I have one. Are you you're going to be affected by the visual look of the pool equipment on the back of the house? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. From my pool and from my backyard, I'm now gonna be looking at all his equipment and hearing all his equipment hanging from the second floor.
Well, his equipment doesn't have to go up there. That's kind of the point, the other point we're making. Jimmy was saying that if the if the equipment is not attached to the house, it can be it can be basically on the on the ground. Now theoretically, you know, pool equipment, I guess, is different than HVAC equipment because theoretically you want to try to elevate the equipment in case we have floods. So in my mind, and I'm just giving a suggestion because I I do this, I build houses with pool equipment. The main the main reasoning for the ten foot is to keep the noise down, which you don't really care about. So but to to, you know, since it's already done and it's a weird situation, maybe to like do what I said, use a solid wall around the pool equipment rather than, you know, having an open railing.
And I'm, listen, I'm just, I'm just asking
You mean where it is now?
Wait, I'm just asking for help.
Yeah, that's my, that's just my
So I don't get stuck.
Okay.
I would, I would completely do that.
Well, right, but that, you know, I don't know how the other board members feel about that.
Well, thank you very much for hearing what I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Can I speak as a private citizen?
Yes, sir. You gotta be sworn in though. And I don't have to accept your credentials.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Obelenus, one oh two South Eighth Street, Violin, New Jersey.
And John, you swear you swear to tell the truth?
I will. Thank you. Just again, point of, you know, again, I'm an architect and this pool issue's been coming up lately a lot of times. And, you know, everybody's saying, well, Longport is this, Inventor is this, and Mark gets this for all different numbers. And I think Jim had an interesting idea about a sound, you know, where it says a noise-reducing structure. We take that as a garage, obviously. It's a garage in the back or a shed or under the house. And again, I'm not an acoustic engineer, but is there a way that we can have a structure that surrounds the existing part of the location that will reduce the sound to a point where it is either less than a condenser or some way to show that, you know, by by building, as as Mike said, building a wall that prevents that sound from coming across, that it would be technically a sound-reducing structure I could be reaching? I don't know, but I like to use these words. What?
You said we could do that.
And keep it in those locations?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I must have missed that part of it. Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How's that affect the HVAC setbacks and?
HVAC HVAC setbacks are okay.
They're okay.
Now, if you're putting a solid wall next to HVAC unit, which shares the same platform, that could pose a problem.
Oh, I'm gonna affect the unit.
Anyone else in the public? Public portion's closed.
Trying to turn my alarm off.
I'm still just a little confused because Roger started out and said, we assumed it was gonna be in the garage.
No, it was on the plans to be in the garage.
You can go back on the tape. He said, we assumed it was in the garage. But no, so are we not checking it? Is this partially our fault too?
It was approved to be in the garage.
Okay.
Approved.
Which is where I was saying underneath.
Right. I had the Asbilt survey.
Okay.
You do the walk-around. The pool wasn't done, there was no water in the pool or the pool wasn't done, equipment was off. The Asbilt survey shows a platform containing only AC units.
Okay.
So
I want to get clear.
Did the walk-around, took pictures of the site, as I always do. Somebody said, how did that pool equipment get approved? I went, what pool equipment? It was in the garage. It was out there. So I looked at the pictures and there is a filter sticking above the railing.
So you're saying when you did the outside and there was no platform, you assumed it was
I assumed it went according to
He assumed it was in the garage because that's where it was on the plane.
Right. You couldn't hear it because it wasn't on, because the pool wasn't operating.
Makes sense.
Now, Leo, are you okay?
I'm okay.
Oh, okay. You're awake. You're good.
I mean, Tom, we assumed it was gonna be in the garage. I mean, that was
And can it be moved to the garage?
I think we have to meet, I think we have to meet flood elevation.
Not if it's in the garage.
Pool equipment?
It's not a detached garage.
Chris.
I'm sorry. The garage is built within the house. It's not detached. So I think if it's part of the house, it's gotta be first, it's gotta be the first floor.
So if you move it into the garage where it was originally gonna be, then you would need a variance to do that?
Yeah, flood elevation variance, I don't know, is that
Uh-huh.
Yeah, a variance for meeting flood elevation.
Yeah, you're deviating from flood
But I'm saying he would have needed a variance anyway to put it where it was supposed to be.
That's, that's correct.
This isn't right.
That's correct.
We messed up. No, 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 that's not If it was supposed to go in the garage and it doesn't meet the flood elevation, then we would have Does it have to meet the, Jimmy, does it have to meet
One at a time.
Does it have to meet the flood elevation?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
That's why they moved it to the outside because it didn't meet it. But we didn't know where there was supposed, where it was gonna go.
Okay.
They took it upon themselves
All right, now, now I get it. Okay. It just seems like a debacle.
We addressed that on plan review and we are supposed to be getting information back that that's correct.
And they didn't give it to you.
No, they did. They said it was gonna be on a platform. They said it was gonna be above the DFE and it wasn't.
Okay. Now, Leo.
All right. It's a C variance application, one C variance for the side yard setback to the pool equipment. They're at eight point two five feet proposed, or ten feet's required. And then any conditions set forth in Mr. McClellan's report, any representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearings will be the conditions. That's it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Tom Collins?
Kind of a quite a mess over a simple little pool filter. However, it seems like in this particular builder and these instances, we're getting this every week, every month, coming and coming and coming. I think maybe it's time that you guys went and got together and went after your builder and and your your guys and let them resolve instead of trying to come to us so that they can walk away scot-free. I can't, I just can't keep looking the other way while this guy tortures everybody in town. I really think that you have to take your own matters into your own hand and do it the right way. This isn't the right way. I vote no.
Richard Patterson?
I'm not gonna add anything to what Tom said. I just agree with what Tom said. I vote no.
Jim Gallantino?
I I just don't know why it's always us that has to give. It's every every single day, if not twenty times a day, Roger and I are being called in and asked why we have to, why they have, why don't we budge? Why don't we have, why we keep moving this line and keeps moving more and more and we're not, it just seems like every day it's just a big fight. And it's and it's always being done. Roger does his review, I do my review. It's all clear. It's black and white. You can't beat it. And then we go back and we have to fight our way to get it back to be to be right.
I agree.
And I, you know, there, and and the people never give up the house. You know, it's always, I gotta, I gotta have my kitchen here, I gotta have my bathroom here. I don't want to give that notch in the building to put that equipment in that'll reduce the sound. No, it's always us. We have to give it. And then that sets up a huge tidal wave and there's people in the audience, if they, we voted one way, they're gonna do the same thing. So I vote no.
Margaret Guber Nalti?
This is a heated discussion. A pool heater discussion. I think we have to look at each case individually. And I don't think the consumer should be punished because his builder either did the wrong thing, didn't follow the rules, asked for forgiveness later. I just don't. I mean, I think they should be hiring Chris to maybe go after their builder or developer because of what they did. If I look at this case individually, there's twenty-three feet and they're both mirror image properties. The neighbor didn't care. The noise didn't affect him. I know this is kind of a principle issue.
Yeah, what about the next neighbors? Yeah, what about the next neighbors?
That want to be able, everybody, everybody wants a pool. Every new construction wants a pool. So, you know, I understand the precedent issue. We don't wanna set a precedent, 'cause this guy behind me wants to build a pool, and the guy across the street wants to build a pool, and the guy six blocks down wants to build a pool. But I was always told to look at everything independently, and I think he's being punished. I think he should go after his builder and developer. I think we're looking for less than two feet, which, how many side yards setbacks, and how many front yard setbacks do we give allowance for one and a half feet? All the time.
Depending on the situation. I'm sorry.
Depending on the individual situation.
Right. My apologies.
I've been here ten years. I mean... I get it, and I, and I empathize with the consumer and with the other builders. But I'm looking at this as an individual case. If there was a, if there was one house here, and a house that had been in existence, I'd say absolutely no. But because there are two new constructions, because they're twenty-three feet apart, because the neighbor didn't care, I, I'm okay with it.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
I'm probably the only yes, but tell me yes. And I'd like to see the quiet, you know, if you could quiet it down by a brick, like...
Right.
But the solid walls, right.
The sound thing, if, if...
That's not hurt though.
Right, that is not...
Remy Pelosi?
I feel for Mr. Breaker. This is a, this sucks. I, I get that. Now it's after the fact. Perhaps if it was the variance before it was built, for this de minimis, you know, one and a half feet, it's a different story. And, you know, it's not his fault, but, you know, his builder did, his builder did. I think we're the wrong place to resolve this. It sounds like it needs to be in a court of law, unfortunately. So, yeah, it sucks, but, you know, it's, it's supposed to be not in the side yard for a number of reasons, as we discussed. And, I'm sorry, that's why, you know, after the fact, we can't change what was already granted and what was supposed to be. So it is on the builder, and I, and I feel bad, but I have to vote no.
Joseph DiGeralamo?
Yeah, this is, this is a tough situation, but what Remy said is, is right on point, and I agree and say no.
Michael Richmond?
Okay, so... It's not a catastrophic situation, you know. Moving the pool, it's not like they gotta move the house over a foot and a half. It's the pool equipment. I, I do think it's de minimis. I think that the, you know, the sound situation could be dealt with, but the bottom line is that it was supposed to be ten feet, and it's, you know, eight and a half, and, you know, it, it... It wasn't like the surveyor made a mistake or anything. The builder chose to do that, so... And it's not, like we all said, it's not the first time. And I definitely was leaning more towards what Pinky was talking about, but, again, it's not a, the end of the world situation. It's, you know, to move the pool equipment is not that big of a deal, so I'm gonna have to vote no also.
The application is denied with one in favor and six opposed.
Next case is Alan Swift, 111 South Andover Avenue, Block 1.01, Lot 6, located in the S-30 zoning district, seeking C variance relief, rear yard setback, and possibly others, in order to expand the second floor deck. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLarnan?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. My report is based on the application of Alan Swift, 111 South Andover Avenue, Block 1.01, Lot 6, within the S-30 zoning district. This house has been in front of the board in several years ago. In order to get built, they needed a couple variances, one of them being lot cover, or landscape coverage, which was granted at twenty-five point some percent. And also, they came back to expand a second floor deck that's required variances. They didn't expand it as much as they wanted to, but they, the neighbors had something to do with that. So they, they're back now to infill a portion of the second floor deck that needs a variance for setbacks. And also, based on some exploration and investigation, we noticed that the landscape coverage is now not, in non-compliance, as grass has been removed and artificial turf has been installed. It's my understanding, discussing with, with the applicant, that, and the board members, we may be able to put a condition on this application if there's a success in approving this. But other than that, there's really nothing. This is not a very detailed application, and I turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLarnan. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant, Alan Swift. Just to follow up to a couple things Mr. McLarnan said. Mr. Swift first came in years ago to build the house, got the variances for the coverage and everything else, and the house got built. There was an issue with the neighbor next door. They were concerned about people being on the deck and having noise. So the deck itself was out to the bulkhead, but not the full width of the house, from the Longport side to the Atlantic City side. Came back a couple years ago to expand it a little more, and the neighbor was okay with that. That neighbor to the left, on Fredericksburg, has since moved out. Mr. Swift spoke to his neighbor, who's in that house presently, and said, "I'm gonna be coming in for a variance. It makes more sense to have the deck extend the full length of that house," which is why we're here tonight. So we're really just, as Mr. McLarnan said, it's a deck infill for the portion that he previously didn't build, because the neighbor was a little bit concerned about maybe the aesthetics, maybe it would be too noisy. All of that presumably has gone away, but Mr. McLarnan said, during a visit to the site, he did notice some landscape coverage was removed and replaced with artificial turf. He brought that to my attention prior to the meeting. I spoke to Mr. Swift, who was gonna try to make it down, but he's not here. He did that because the grass that was planted, which was part of the condition of the building of the house, had all died. He replaced it a few times, and it kept dying, and it got mushy, 'cause it just turned into dirt. Mr. Swift said, "I'll absolutely put the grass back. I think it's gonna die again, but if it's a condition of the board, I wanna cooperate and, you know, do everything I can do." So to the extent that the removal of the artificial grass, which we know is not permitted in Margate, anyway, he'll do that and replace it with, hopefully, something third time around or fourth time that will work. But it wasn't meant to, you know...
Put a ground cover, put a pack of sanders up the middle.
Something...
That, that only grows this high.
Probably could work, but he just thought it would be maintenance free to do the artificial turf. He didn't know that that went against code. I spoke to him after Roger called me, and he said, "I'm gonna cooperate whatever the board wants. The deck is important to him."
But I don't think he met landscaping requirements to begin with, and it had a variance for that.
That's right.
Right, so this just made it worse.
Correct.
Okay.
So he's gonna put it back where it's grass. So that, that's the backstory. With me tonight is Don Zachar, licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. We're just gonna get Don to talk about what portion of the deck is gonna be prospectively infilled, and as Roger's report points out, which we concur with a hundred percent, ten feet's required. Under the code, we're proposing zero. And what that'll do is, it'll just create a straight line of deck across the front of the house on the beach side, and what's presently there will be constructed to look exactly as the house as it's built now. And I presume everyone has seen the house. It's very tastefully done. It's a Van Dyne build. It's flood compliant. It's one of the nicer beachfront properties, but he does want that additional bit of deck. So, having said that as background, Don, if you don't mind getting sworn in by Mr. Manos, and we'll get a little bit of testimony here regarding what you're intending to design for Alan.
Mr. Zachar?
My name is Don Zachar, 503 North Harvard Avenue, Ventnor, New Jersey.
And you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. Don, if you could just explain to the board what Mr. Swift asked you to do regarding the straightening out of the deck to make it match what's there now, and how we're gonna accomplish that, taking into consideration that, what we just discussed, the turf issue is coming out to be replaced with grass, which will show on the plan.
Right. All right, so, right now, the, the first floor deck extends from the face of the house along Andover to the rear of the house at the rear yard of twelve and a half feet, compliant. The, the upper level deck, the second floor deck, is short of that. Not fully, but right now, it comes within twelve and a half feet of the rear of the house. So what we propose to do is to add to the second floor deck approximately nine feet, leaving three and a half feet from the edge of the new additional deck to the edge of the line of the deck below. It's really simple, in terms of what we propose to, to add. We're not expanding the overall deck area in terms of the relativity of the first floor deck, which extends from the bulkhead to the house, front of the house to the rear of the house. We're merely adding to a portion of the second floor deck and stopping three and a half feet, feet short of the rear of the house.
And, Don, the deck that will be installed now will match up with everything that's there, correct?
It will, in terms of the railing, the material, the decking itself, the columns, and everything else having to do with the appearance of the deck. It'll look like it was all...
It's gonna extend from the front of the house, basically, as it looks now, across the whole entire front.
Right.
As it faces the beach.
As you're facing the house from the beach, you're back to the, to the beach, to the ocean, the deck would extend the total, the total width of the house, short of nine and a half feet, or three and a half feet, rather.
So, in your professional opinion, you would consider this a small deck expansion to match what's presently there?
I would, yes.
Do those stairs coming off the second floor deck, they'll stay there?
They'll stay, they'll stay there as well as a window of the kitchen.
Got it.
Will stay there.
Do you see any negative that could be associated with this variance if the board were to grant it?
Not at all.
And to the extent the board grants this, and there would be some negative associated, would the benefits outweigh any negatives?
The benefits would definitely outweigh any negatives, and I can't think of any negatives.
We don't have too much more. I know it's gonna be a long night and other applications behind us, but, you know, it's very simple. If you've been to the house, the deck's just gonna match what's there now, and Alan's been pretty proactive in talking to his neighbor and explaining what he wants to do. And he actually was getting along great with the other neighbor, but he moved, and Alan said, you know, "It's good enough time to finish the deck." So we would rest, based on the board having further questions, if you have any.
I, I did receive a call from the next door neighbor saying that she wasn't against this application.
You know that's not a visible red.
Yeah, I know.
He just admitted it.
I admitted that she called me.
Okay, is there a, I'd like to open it up for public portion, if there's anyone here that has any questions or comments. Public portion's closed. Leo?
I also wanna point out that the grass is dying, because they are using their driveway. That's what we want.
All right.
Not dying grass, but we want people to use the driveway. I'm seeing that more often.
We're working on a solution. We're working on a solution.
So it's a C variance motion, or it's just one C variance, the side yard setback to the deck is gonna go to zero feet, where ten feet's required. The landscaping coverage variance is gonna go away, because as a condition of approval, they're gonna replace the artificial grass with approved landscaping to get it back to the previous approved twenty-five percent landscaping coverage. There is a waiver. The survey's older, older than two years. But that, that's, that's minimal. And then, any conditions in Mr. McLarnan's report? That's it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the application. It's very de minimis. I think the only people that would be objecting to this would be seagulls and clams. It faces the ocean. It's no negative impact to the neighborhood, and Mr. Swift does a nice, nice job in maintaining a beautiful property on the beach. So I vote yes.
Richard Patterson?
I just stood on the bulkhead in front of the neighbor's house looking, and I, I don't see what, it wouldn't do anything. I just don't see... I think if somebody sees a house now and next summer comes back and sees it, they're not gonna know anything was done. So I approve the application.
Jim Gallantino?
It actually corrects a really crazy framing job that they had to do to make that, all that offset.
That Van Dyne's just no good.
I didn't say... Agree. I approve.
Margaret Gubernalty?
I see no negative impact to the neighbors. I vote in favor of the application.
Remy Pelosi?
I agree with the other board members. I approve.
Joseph DiGeralamo?
No negative impacts. I approve.
Michael Richmond?
I agree with all the other board members. I approve.
The application is approved with seven in favor and zero opposed.
Next case. Brett Fisher, 9316 Winchester Avenue, Block 227, Lot 89, located in the MF zoning district, seeking C variance for a lot area, lot width, minimum side yard, and possibly others, in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLarnan?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. It's application, it's a new application for Brett Fisher at 9316 Winchester Avenue, Block 227, Lot 89, within the MF zoning district. The zoning height is based on BFE plus four, plus thirty feet, or nine feet, plus thirty feet for parking. Of course, 'cause of the width of the lot is less than forty feet, there are only now two stories over parking versus two and a half stories over parking. The application is deemed complete. It's a hardship variance as well as a substantial benefit variance. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of City Margate in order to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling above parking on a narrow but long lot within the city's MF zoning district. The site is located on the ocean side of Winchester Avenue between Adams and Washington Avenues. The lowest habitable floor was at grade and suffers damage from a superstorm standing for the existing house that has now been removed. Schedule for the MF zone is on page two. Highlighted are the variances being requested and being required in salt. There are four of them. Documents reviewed on section two. I just wanna refresh your memory. This application was in a couple months ago, and it was denied. This is a similar application, but it is different with the following differences. One is the side yard setback variance being requested is significantly less, and also, the building coverage, although it was compliant before, has actually been reduced about, I'd say, eight or, eight or nine percent, if I remember correctly. So the variances require as followed. Lot width, whereas a minimum lot width is forty feet, twenty-five feet exists, and twenty-five feet is proposed. This is an existing, non-conforming lot width. Lot area, whereas the minimum, the minimum lot area is forty-four hundred square feet for two families, thirty-one, twenty-five square feet exist, and three thousand one hundred twenty-five feet is proposed. Again, if you equate that to the old MF zone standards, it satisfies the S-30 zoning district if you were building a single-family home. Side yard setback, principal structure on the right, whereas a minimum side yard setback is five feet, and three point six seven feet or three feet eight inches is proposed. Same thing for the left side. Three, three feet eight inches is proposed, where five feet is required. Waivers requested, copy of an area map showing all lots within two hundred feet of the property. Not requested, but it, it should be a waiver request, and my comments are as follows. I'm not gonna read all of them, but they highlight some of the important ones, the areas within the MF zoning district. And since the zoning ordinance has been revised, reflect, MF zoning standards apply. The front yard setbacks are actually greater than required. The rear yard setback is greater than required. The attic is a non-habitable attic with an area of ceiling heights seven feet or more, less than one-third of a floor area, so it's not requiring a variance, and does not meet this definition of a habitable half-story. Building coverage for this lot is being met. It matches the intent of the ordinance changes in the MF zone. Front yard landscaping and total landscaping requirements are being met. The curb cut and driveway meet the requirements of the ordinance. A ten-foot curb cut is proposed to prevent parking below the structure as permitted. The setback to the garage doors being met. Pool equipment will meet all setback and noise-reducing requirements.
Is it on the plan?
It's on the plan, and it will be on the plan.
Pete's plan, very good plan.
Yes. The lot width and area are existing, non-conforming, and are not able to be enlarged. The lot area is more than, more than large enough to support a single-family dwelling unit, as witnessed on the density calculations. FAR is less than the maximum permitted. The structure meets the intent of the ordinance, and the variances are a result of the hardship for the long, narrow lot. Plans indicate grass governorship with street trees as required, and the waiver could be granted without any detriment to the application. Again, this is a hardship variance and a substantial benefit variance, and I turn it over to the applicant for the proofs.
Mr. Goldstein, before you start, could I just make a quick comment? Since we've heard this case in detail, in big detail before, if everybody agrees, maybe we could just concentrate on the changes, so that we can see what changed.
At the board's pleasure. I was gonna try to keep it short and sweet.
Not to the chairman, but...
It's up to the board, but absolutely, it's...
What? Go ahead, Eric.
As Mr. Collins had indicated, this case had been presented with slightly different setbacks a few months ago, so we would obviously incorporate that and rely upon that record with regard to tonight's application. So having said that, we're really talking about a change in the setbacks based on Mr. Weiss's design that I'll have to get right into, and talk about how the setbacks do not, in any way, cause a negative, that the benefit would outweigh any possible negative. And then I'd also wanna add something that Mr. Fisher went ahead and changed, which was a wall to kind of give a little bit more shield to the neighbors, who potentially had a little bit of an issue with the last application. So having said that, Pete, if you don't mind walking it through pretty quickly, and I spread about the wall, and we'll get moving here.
Mr. Weiss?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you don't mind getting sworn in.
Yeah, yeah. Gotta do you again. Just state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Weiss, 101 Washington Avenue, Margate.
And you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
And we obviously accept your qualifications as an architect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manos. All right, Pete, give us a quick design and...
Okay, well, it's, as mentioned, it's a, it's a long, narrow lot. What we're developing is a single-family home, the ground floor, garage entry, patio area, and then the pool in the rear. Upstairs, we have a living space and den, four bedrooms, and three baths. Since the last application, what we did was, we did...
Can't hear you, Pete.
We increased the side setback on each side by six inches, so we made the building a foot narrower. So now it's less than... Less than eighteen feet wide, seventeen foot eight inches. And that's effectively the only variances we're seeking, because we can't control the lot area and width, or larger, rather. So, like I said, that gives you a building seventeen foot eight inches wide. If we were to comply with the ordinance and provide five feet on either side, that would, you know, only give us a building that's fifty feet wide. Useful to develop, so, I mean, I think we've shrunk this down as much as we can and be able to make the project viable. Of course, in shrinking it, we also reduced the square footage a little bit, but that was never really a concern. Brett did speak with the neighbors after the last hearing, and what we did was add some partitions in the rear to shield the decks that we have from the neighboring properties, which, since this is one off the corner, their, their building's kinda faced, or the backs of their building, I guess, were up against the side of our building, so there was some concern about privacy.
Pete, just, you know, for the record, do you see any negative associated with the variances we're seeking this evening? And to the extent someone could say that there was a negative associated therewith, would the benefits of what we're seeking greatly outweigh any negatives? Mr. Chairman, we are here. If you have any questions, Mr. Fisher can answer, but you have the hearing previously. It's basically the same house, but a slightly smaller, with the wall now for privacy for the neighbors. I think that we would rest on those proofs.
Well, we, we talk about mistakes a lot tonight, and I wanna say this. I made a bad mistake the last meeting. It was late. I was really tired, and this is what I heard Mr. Collins say. "This house has five bedrooms, and it's way bigger than the other house that we just approved down the street." He didn't say that. That's what I heard, and that's why I voted no. So with these changes, I would've approved it before, but I think this house was actually even then smaller than the, than the other house that was there, so that was on me.
Well, I appreciate that, of course, and I'm sure Mr. Fisher does, but, you know, in the scheme of things, he's gonna build a house that's gonna be owned by someone, hopefully, for forty or fifty years, so the month or two in the delay, it's something that, you know, it's just a fact of life that we have to deal with. And probably, in the wait, and the market keeps going up, maybe you made Brett some money. So that could be a good thing. So that could be a good thing.
So Eric, it's my understanding that Brett, you reached out to some of the neighbors. I don't see anybody here speaking against it that I know of, but...
Mr. Fisher, Brett Fisher, for the record, do you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
I spoke to the neighbors on Winchester Avenue and Adams Avenue, four sets. They were very happy after we discussed it.
And I do think I want to attribute some of the last meeting's denial on the Zoom. I don't think you could accurately betray your application effectively over a Zoom call. And that's one of the detriments of having a Zoom call. I think you can effectively show the board what you're doing in a live meeting much more better than...
No. That was a couple of months ago. It was a couple of months ago.
I think it was the last...
It was the last Zoom meeting we had, and I think that played a part of it, in my belief, but...
I agree.
Here we are.
Look, and that's again, I very much appreciate it. You know what, we're here, we're fixing problems. Hopefully, we don't have any once Brett gets going. So, you know, obviously, very nice that the board has taken that into consideration. But also, you know, Brett's design changed a little bit. Think that what you have now is probably a better product. Pete went back to the drawing board, so we're good to go. Thank you. Yeah.
Let's vote. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak or have any comments? Public portion's closed, Leo?
Okay, it's a C variance application. Couple of C variances, lot width, they have twenty-five feet, forty feet's required. Lot area, they have three thousand one hundred twenty-five square feet, where forty-four hundred square feet's required. And then side yard setbacks on each side, three point six seven feet or five feet's required. There's a waiver from that area map showing all properties within two hundred feet. And then the conditions will be anything in Mr. McLornan's report unless otherwise addressed tonight. And then our typical conditions that I usually put in the resolutions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Tom Collins?
You know, it's funny, we come, sometimes we all become, including builders and our board, a little complacent on some deals. And sometimes it takes a case like this to wake us up and say, you know, let's pay a little more attention to a project, a little bit of more attention to the city. I think the changes you made were phenomenal. I think it's great. I know you do a great job building, and the neighbors are happy since they're not complaining. So that's even making it easier. And I see no negative impacts to the neighborhood. I see positive impacts because we're getting a chunk of dirt. What it's been, it's built into a nice house, so I vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
We had two slum houses on this property before. It was a mess. This is really cleaning up the neighborhood. I think it benefits everybody. I approve the application.
Jim Gallantino?
That was a beautiful slum house. How dare you say that?
I forgot you lived there, Jim.
Thank you. I think Brett's removed more old houses that have been non-flood compliant than anybody in the city. Just for that reason alone, I think is an attribute and a positive. I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalty?
I was not here at the last meeting, so I'm not going to take any guff for that. But thank you for the changes. Certainly, the benefits outweigh any detriment. It's a nice project, and I approve the application.
Remy Pelosi?
I concur with the other board members.
Joseph DiGirolamo?
Hey Brett, you made the nice changes and you're taking this little tiny lot and making it work. And congratulations, and I approve.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I'm glad you were able to get the neighbors happy, and I'm going to approve the project.
The application is approved with seven in favor and zero opposed.
Last case is Robert and Virginia Aricchetti, 24 North Madison Avenue, Block 230, Lot 41, located in the MF zoning district, seeking C variance relief for front yard setback, side yard setback, and possibly others in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current. Proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLornan?
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board Members. The original report is dated August 25th, 2021, and since revised, the application is Robert and Virginia Aricchetti at 24 North Madison Avenue, Block 230, Lot 41, another home within the MF zoning district. Required a effective firm elevation is elevation ten. That means thirteen feet to the bottom of the floor. You could have nine feet with parking below. It's deemed complete at this time. This is another hardship variance because it's a very shallow lot. And it's also, as any other variance would be, it's a substantial benefit variance. The applicant is seeking relief to construct a new flood-compliant home at 24 North Madison Avenue. Property is shallow in depth and relatively wide, while adjacent properties are relatively narrow but deeper in depth. Due to the misfit property, several variances are being requested. There's also an existing drainage problem to the left of the property in the rear, and that cannot go unaddressed. I think the applicant will address that tonight. The architect has revised the zoning to reflect the required zoning for the MF zone. Page two is the zoning chart. Continue on top of page three. The documents reviewed are in section two on page three. The variances required are as follows. Front yard setback to the porch, whereas prevailing front yard setback is twelve point four two feet. Three point three feet exist and seven feet is proposed. Front yard setback to the second floor deck likewise, whereas prevailing front yard setback is twelve point four two feet. Three point three feet exist and seven feet is proposed. Actually, three point three feet, there is no second floor deck on the existing home. Front yard setback to the principal structure, whereas prevailing front yard setback is eighteen point two feet. Ten point five feet exist and fifteen feet is proposed. So the front yard setback to the building is greater than it is today, but it doesn't meet the average within two hundred feet. Minimum side yard setback with parking, whereas minimum side yard setback with parking in the MF zone is twelve feet and ten feet is proposed. And lastly, a rear yard setback for the principal structure, whereas a minimum rear yard setback is twenty feet and ten feet is proposed. Again, because of the MF zoning changes, that's more for the multifamily and should be not applied to the single-family, and that will be corrected in the near future. Submission of a current survey should be requested as a waiver. In this case, because there is a grading problem, a drainage problem along the side and the rear, a grading plan will be required for compliance. Grading submitted as directional, only no grades for a grading plan have been submitted. Again, flow errors kind of indicate the intent, but there is no design. The three variances being requested for front yard setbacks are all due to the comparison of much deeper lots and a shallow lot in question. The minimum side yard setback for driveways was increased from ten feet to twelve feet for a reason, and this variance cannot be justified, especially when the parking requirements are being met without having that extra parking on the side. My opinion, eliminate the unnecessary side yard parking space, which would also increase the front yard landscape and reduce curb cut openings along Madison Avenue. Just the front yard steps are shown, they just lead to nowhere. Again, that should be addressed. Is it to a sidewalk that goes to the public sidewalk or what happens there? All landscape requirements are being met. The landscape plan is accurate but shall be provided. That is accurate, shall be provided. All shrub beds are to be mulched. And that concludes my report at this time. I'll turn it over to Mr. Callahan.
Evening, Brian Callahan of the law firm Callahan-Thompson-Thompson. On behalf of the applicant, I have Mr. and Mrs. Aricchetti here. I have John Obelenis. Very briefly, the lot's sixty-two and a half feet wide, fifty feet deep. So the C1 variances are really judged by that. If we complied with the current setbacks of eighteen foot for a front yard, twenty foot for a rear yard, I'd have a bowling alley. And what we've really done for the C1 portions of it, which I think will be fairly easy for you to grant, is technically, we had a house, as Roger indicated, that was sitting with an existing ten-foot setback. We're moving it back to fifteen. The porch was at three feet. We're moving that back to seven, and we're putting a second floor porch on it. So we're giving us greater setbacks than what's existing right now. Rear yard setback, same thing. Roger has indicated it's a twenty-foot setback required. We're going to ten-foot setback in the rear, so we have at least a semblance of a house. So I think those are really the C1s. The two issues that we deal with tonight, I think, is side yard, where we have a ten-foot side yard, we put in a third parking space. So the real issue that you have tonight to really address is, is that third parking space on-site worth a two-foot variance? When you're not losing any on-the-street parking? We're still going to have roughly three on-street parking spaces because if you went past the house, current curb cut more or less in the middle of the house versus moving it to the end. Curb width is still eighteen feet. So the question becomes, how do you want to handle that extra two feet for the parking in moving that in? We get a third street, it's an MF standard, you have some multifamily in the area. So can you, can we justify that two-foot variance to take one car off-street, put it on the site? Summertime, yeah, is really beneficial. Wintertime, probably not so beneficial. We're not going to have it. And then the other conditions that Roger had missed, landscaping conditions, grading conditions, swale conditions, we agree with them all. Let me call Mr. Obelenis, have him sworn. Let me call, which Aricchetti? Both Aricchettys want to swap, just to be sworn. So if you had any questions of them as you go, they can jump in and answer them.
If the three, you can just go down the line, state your name and address for the record. I'll swear all three in.
Cherry Hill address.
Permanent address or address?
It doesn't matter.
Virginia Aricchetti, 134 South Mansfield Boulevard, Cherry Hill.
Robert Aricchetti, 134 South Mansfield Boulevard, Cherry Hill.
John Obelenis, 102 South Eighth Street, Vinland.
Raise your right hand, each swear in front of the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? Great, thank you.
John, why don't you go ahead and walk them through the existing house versus proposed house and some of the variance relief that we're going to be requesting?
Okay, thank you. Well, if you look at this property, and if I turn it sideways, it becomes a normal property. You know, with the width, the setbacks and stuff, we wouldn't need a variance for it, you know? But it's turned sideways, and obviously, the depth is only fifty feet. And by, as Brian said, by the time you subtract the front yard setback, the rear yard setback, the other house is twelve feet wide. And so, right, having said that, we're asking for these front yard variances and rear yard variance to be consistent with the neighborhood. It's pretty straightforward. We did talk about the parking. I think it's funny hearing that we don't need that extra spot, but, you know, we like, my clients like to have that spot for family. The issue with the setback for parking is that, let's say we push that to a twelve-foot setback for the MF zone, we still have an eighteen-foot curb cut. So it doesn't eliminate the curb cuts. Regardless of that ten-foot versus twelve-foot parking lane, with the two cars side by side, we're still going to have that eighteen-foot curb cut. So that doesn't help that in that case. The way, other than the house setbacks, I'm going to just focus on that parking for the moment. The only part that's affected is the front, which is in yellow here. All that parking spot is in the front yard setback. So really, the twelve-foot requirement is only for that two and a half foot corner of the house itself. We felt that it's a minor inclusion into that parking lane compared to the twelve. We do have ten feet, which is, you know, adequate for the other nine zones. But in this case, we wanted to highlight that corner as a part that only, you know, is...
Are you talking about where the garage door is inset, that thing to the left?
Yeah, that part, that supports the house above, but yes, that's a piece that's...
That's the only piece that's...
Into the twelve foot, yes.
That's the setback variance.
The setback variance is technically the entire side of that house since we're parking on that side of the house. But the only parking portion is that first eighteen or twenty feet going back. The rest of the house, we don't have parking going down the balance of that house. The other part of the parking is in the garage area.
Yeah, we have parking, yeah, we have parking in the garage, and we have parking, obviously, in front of the garage. And this was a request by my clients to add the extra spot on the corner for visitors and children.
Are we losing any on-street parking?
We are not.
Where's the current setback? Where's the current curb cut? Where the house would have been?
It's further toward the middle of the house, and we're going to eliminate that. We're going to add that to the street parking, and we're going to shift it to the corner, to the left-hand corner.
Right. Roger had also mentioned landscaping plans and grading plans. Any problem with providing that as part of final plan?
No, we will provide that as required.
Talk a little bit about the drainage in the swale area.
Well, again, we just showed, for the purposes here, these are not engineered plans. They show the hope of directing the water toward the street. That will be done with an engineered drainage plan. We'll have somebody provide that for us, a professional engineer to do that for us.
And the front steps?
Front step, I left two lines out. You know, my joke is, people ask me what I do for a living, and I say I do lines. You know, in this case, I left, I'm sorry, I left out two lines, but, you know...
I'll just say, I can believe that.
You seem a little jumpy, John.
The front steps, the front steps will go...
Yes, I'll show where the sidewalk extends, the steps to the sidewalk. We're not going to turn it toward the driveway, but we have about a two-foot length of sidewalk from that point to the, you know, from the steps to the sidewalk. We'll include that.
Going back to the C1 criteria of unique size and shape, do you think that the, at least the front yard variances and rear yard variances fall within that hardship category of a C1?
I believe so, absolutely.
Do you see any substantial detriment to the public good or the character of the neighborhood by granting those variances?
I don't, only because we're approving from the houses there now. You know, we're pushing back further from the street, so that's all good to the good.
Do you see any substantial detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance? Single-family house permitted in the area?
Yes.
All right. Let's go to, technically speaking, the twelve-foot versus ten-foot. Do you believe that that, granting of that variance would have a substantial detriment on the character of the neighborhood?
I don't think so.
Do you think it would have a substantial detriment on the zone plan or zoning ordinance?
No.
I don't have any other questions of Mr. Obelenis. I'd like to call up Mr. Aricchetti to give you a little background of why he would like that particular variance.
Okay, I have comments, but I'll wait till I hear what he has to say.
Thank you. As you know, parking can be horrendous here during the summer, especially on weekends, holiday weekends or worse. Right now, even with the way it's set up with the current house, I always have to go out to ask somebody to move their car back from my driveway. We're just looking to try to get, you know, one more car off the street. Our, when we bought that house in 2007, our daughters were ten and twelve. Now they're twenty-four and twenty-six, and they have significant others. So it's only a matter of time where we're going to be having grandchildren come in there. I'd just like to be able to accommodate them with the parking.
Do you see any detriment on your neighbors on either side by adding that additional parking on that side?
I don't see any.
I don't have anything else. Like, Mr. Patterson, I know you're jumping.
Brian, I have a question for you. From the picture shown here that you submitted, it looks like the parking that you're talking about there butts up against the driveway of the neighbor? So there's no structure there. Is that correct?
You're talking about this, is there, are you asking us if, is there a structure on the other side of our driveway?
Right, where the driveway...
On the proposed driveway?
Yes, on the proposed one.
Where your proposal is, what's next door to you?
Landscaping, but it's...
Another driveway?
It's another...
Well, no, the driveway's further down. And as a matter of fact, people park, there's curb there. People already parked there.
In the street, correct?
Yeah, in the street.
Right, so we're taking that away. Building, it's just some landscaping and a driveway.
There's landscaping and then their driveway, yeah.
So you do lose an on-street parking spot.
What do you mean losing? We're not taking away from any parking on the street, we're just trying to...
You just said they park in the street right next to the driveway. So you're building a driveway right next to their driveway, there's going to be ten feet there.
No, but, don't worry.
Are you moving the existing driveway?
Yes. The driveway we have right now is on the completely opposite side of the house.
Changing the location?
Yes, same side.
Still, it winds up as an eighteen-foot curb cut.
So you're just trading spaces?
Well, I don't see that.
They have a parking space for eighteen.
Roger says if that, first of all, we don't like, you're making the front yard a parking lot. Thirty-five percent, look, you're great on landscaping, but that thirty-five's minimum. There's nothing wrong with having more landscape coverage, especially down in that area where there's hardly any landscaping. If you get rid of that extra spot, you've got a nine-foot or ten-foot curb cut instead of an eighteen-foot curb cut.
Well, you're still going to need a curb cut get in, I mean, and that's...
Not a double curb cut, you need a single curb cut.
But I agree. And that's the issue that we've presented to you tonight, which we're asking for. Because the issue is, in an MF zone... the issue is, in an MF zone, is that, is it worth having one more car on-site?
And Mr. Obelenis said, either way, you end up with an eighteen-foot curb cut, and you don't.
John, what did, what?
I think, I think if we're required to have a twelve-foot lane in an MF zone for a parking spot, that requires a side-by-side parking, that requires an eighteen-foot curb cut.
But if you don't have that side-by-side parking, you're, so it's not either way. If you don't have that parking spot, you're only going to have a single driveway. Microphone.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, this is.
Look, I, I think it's a great case. Your, your lot is crazy, your setbacks are crazy because of where the neighbors are, and it just doesn't fit. But, but I agree with Roger on that extra parking spot. You're going to, you're, you're taking spots away from the street where the front yard is, is a double parking for a single-car garage. More landscaping would be good there. And I'm, look, I'm one person, I'm just saying that.
And then that, that's, we, we understood coming in here that we did not think that we had a problem dealing with front yard setbacks or the rear yard setback. In reading Roger's report, we thought that the issue would have been, okay, that extra parking spot.
Exactly.
And we thought that, that's why we wanted to present it to you, by saying, it, you guys have to make a decision as to whether an on-site additional parking spot is worth the curb cut and a loss of, and a loss of some landscaping where we have adequate landscaping to begin with.
I understand.
That's the issue that you have before.
Exactly. And the, but the problem is, you have all these variances, it's going to be one vote. So that's why I'm saying to you, I wouldn't support it, but I don't speak for the board.
Well, we could, we could bifurcate the vote and just say, let's vote on the hardship variances first.
We could, but we don't like to split votes here.
Is the current curb cut eighteen feet?
Is your current curb cut?
What is the current curb cut?
The curb, the proposed?
The existing.
Current one.
I don't have a dimension for that.
Nine feet.
Is it nine feet?
It's a regular driveway.
It's a regular driveway.
So we're going to eliminate that and make it eighteen at another location? So we're taking another nine feet of, of straight parking?
We're going to remove the original one, and then basically shift it over to the left of the property.
Okay, so we're going from nine-foot driveway.
Yeah, it's not just moving a driveway, it's doubling the size of it.
Right, that's, that's clarified.
But, but in our position, that extra nine feet does not give you an additional one space on-street parking for that nine feet, because most of them are, you know, at a minimum. If you have a Camry, you have a fifteen-foot, you need fifteen, sixteen feet of street.
I understand that, but the stripe in the street is not at the property line. There's, there's a lot of feet on the next-door neighbor's property before his driveway starts.
No, Rich, I think what you're missing is, is when they move the driveway over, that's going to be.
I'm looking where the new driveway is.
Yeah, it's going to be small. It won't be a parking spot.
So how many parking spots are out in front now of the house?
This is that side of the house where the new driveway's going to go here. Here's the line.
So you're going to lose one?
So they have this space plus all this space.
We, we will have eighteen minus here, two and a half, so we have forty-five feet.
Their driveway's going to be up here.
Uninterrupted space in front of your house.
Three cars, three cars with the existing driveway where it is. Now we're going to move that driveway over to the other side.
But we're at, we're taking nine additional feet. And therefore, we still think that we have room for three cars. Now, now, when I say three cars, am I saying, are those cars twenty feet long cars, Suburbans? No. Am I saying, do I have three Camrys in there? Yes.
Off-street parking space is twenty feet long.
Right.
And you're taking away a spot on your neigh, in front of your neighbors and, and his house. There is a spot there. I'm looking at it right now, a picture, a aerial photograph. From your property line to the next-door neighbor's driveway, there's a room for a car alone, and you're going to be adding nine feet if you don't have that eighteen-foot driveway. Those are, definitely, you're going to lose the space there. Because if the driveway's there, you're not going to have room between the two driveways.
Are you talking to the left of the property from the aerial view?
Well, I'm looking at Madison Avenue here, and this is where your new driveways are to the left of the property.
Right.
Well, I'm looking at that from the aerial view.
Because on the other side of the property, if you look there, when the house that was built on the other side, that was two years ago. And they have a double drive there. There's a very small space as to, as a matter of fact, there's lines there that imply no parking, but people park there all the time. So when we lose that existing driveway now, that's only going to help add more space to, to, to that spot on the right-hand side.
Right, and you're taking more space away from the other side. It's not an even trade.
Rich, what he's saying is, you can't park now on the opposite side of his existing driveway. When he gives you that nine-foot back, it's going to give you a full space.
Correct. So on the right-hand side, I pick up a space, on the left-hand side, I lose nine feet.
So you're still going to maintain three?
We believe that we still have three. But I don't have three twenties, of course, because the lot's only sixty-two and a half to begin with, but I mean.
Well, that's, but that's your lot, but there's also space on the neighbor's side before his driveway. So for practicality purposes, you have, you're going to lose the space by doing this on the street.
But I think I pick up a space on the right-hand side where the current existing driveway.
In total, I think you're going to lose the space.
We respectfully disagree with that.
But I'm just saying, you're, that's what I'm saying, so you think I'm wrong, which is fine, I, I may be wrong, but I'm saying, considering both sides, it seems to me you're losing a space on the street.
But we want more off-street parking, don't we?
Yes. Pardon?
We want more off-street parking, and we're meeting landscaping, and it's in a neighborhood where it's jammed. I mean, I don't know why we're arguing over him taking a part of it. If he wasn't meeting landscaping, and he was taking away from that to get a, to try to squeeze in a private space, but he's not, he's meeting everything, and it's going to be a better flow on the streets. I think we're, it's silly what we're arguing over.
You called me silly.
Yes, I am. But at least you're awake.
I'm saying, this is my opinion, I want you to consider it.
Well, it's coming up on ten o'clock, so.
Well, this is postponed to next month.
We're, 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 we're completed.
That's eleven o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
John, is there a street tree in front of that driveway?
On the driveway?
Yeah. I think there is.
On, on the plan here?
No. The existing.
You're going to have to relocate street trees, John.
Okay, that's good.
How many trees do you have prior to that?
I think there's only one.
One.
So one, you'd have to relocate it.
It's actually right on the border.
Yours is the brick house, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two right next to each other.
Yeah, we have one, one's on the border.
Anyone from the public here to speak? None? Public portion's closed. Leo?
I think we should consider bifurcating the vote. What's the board's thought on that? Everyone seems, no?
Mine's the only vote that counts.
Well, I, I, I do think it's the, it's, it's the applicant's decision. You know, in theory, they could have come in without that parking spot, gotten approval, probably unanimous, and then they could come back next month on just that extra spot. And we, you know, they'd have to pay another application fee and go through that whole process, but when the effect of a denial on one variance means that the whole application fails, I, I, I do believe legally, it, it should be up to the applicant on that, on that issue. Thoughts, Brian?
Leo, as a board, do you think we're, that, that we could be in jeopardy on that? If we don't bifurcate the vote?
Let's just do it.
If we deny the application in its entirety?
Right.
That would potentially set us up for something where.
I, I think if the applicant requests that we bifurcate it, and we do not, and then the, the, the whole application fails over this parking space issue, then I, I do think that that potentially gives the applicant an argument.
Let's do the easy way. Let me ask you for a bifurcation. Even though I, I always, I mean, I truly believe, based on the comments that I've heard tonight from the board, that the only person that I have that has some serious concerns is Mr. Patterson and, and Mr. McLaurin, and Mr. McLaurin is a non-voter. But I, but for the.
It's up to you.
For the safety of my clients, I would still ask for a bifurcation, just to be on the safe side.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's do two votes. The first vote will be, it's a C variance application, there's, there's five C variances in total. The first vote will be on four of the five. Front yard setback to the porch, seven feet's proposed, twelve point four, two feet's required. Front yard setback to the second-floor deck, seven feet's proposed, twelve point four, two feet is required. Front yard setback to the actual dwelling, fifteen feet's proposed, where eighteen point two feet is required. Those are prevailing setbacks. And then we have the rear yard setback of ten feet where, to the house, ten feet where twenty feet's required. So that will be the first vote.
I'll make that motion.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the application. I think that what you're doing with the property, I've seen the property, I've been at that house, is going to be nice, it's going to be a, a positive impact on the neighborhood. I see no negative impact on the neighborhood. Over the last few years, that neighborhood has changed a lot, it's become very crowded. So I think the way you're lining everything up is perfect, and I vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
I really think you need the variance, it's just based on the shape of the lot where it is. As John said before, if the lot was in a different place, the same, very same lot, in a different angle or whatever, you wouldn't need anything. So I think it's an absolute help to the neighborhood, and I don't see any detriment. So I heartily approve the application.
Jim Gallantino?
I agree, the lot does create the hardship. And also, removing a non-conforming wire chain link fence, which is a big on our hit list. I approve the application.
Margaret Gubernalty?
I agree with the other board members, and I approve the application.
Remy Pelosi?
I agree with the other board members and approve.
Joseph DiGirolamo?
I concur with the other board members and approve.
Michael Richmond?
I agree with the other board members and I approve.
Okay, and then the, Roger, do, do they need a survey? Do you need, do they need to submit a, a current survey? There was something in there about a waiver.
There was a waiver for that, but they, they're going to need that for the grading plan anyway.
Okay. All right, so the second motion is for the C variance for the side yard setback with parking, when, since that extra parking space is over there, twelve feet are required and ten feet's proposed. So I need a motion in a second on that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
As I've said before, I think this is really a silly issue. The neighborhood dictates that, that space is probably needed. We want that neighborhood to be improved, we want chain link fences gone, we want houses flood compliant, and we want parking and neighbors not fighting. Minor, it's very de minimis, it'll have no impact on the neighbor. If you had a wall or a house or something against that property line that would infringe, or if your landscaping was being hurt by it because you're trying to take parking, I wouldn't agree. But in this case, you're making so many compliances, improving it so much, and it's just a small issue, so I vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
This is one of the largest issues I've come across in thirty-seven years of doing. I'm, I'm looking right now at Google Earth Street View, and this, this is why I'm against it. There's cement all over the place, and this is, there's, there's new houses there, too. There's no grass strips. And for the benefit of the neighborhood, you are taking away a street parking spot. You are meeting landscaping, but my point was, there's no maximum on landscaping, there's only a minimum. And you can get the number of cars you need in your house without that extra parking spot. That parking spot would be replaced with something on the street. You could park there and take that, hog that spot. But because of the look of the neighborhood and trying to improve those neighborhoods, I think more landscaping and a smaller curb cut would be good. And that's my reasons, and nobody else agrees, but that's what I wanted on the record. So I vote.
Jim Gallantino?
And I hope it passes.
And I appreciate our chairman's words. I mean, he's, you know, looking out for the neighbors. I, I think that the representation by their attorney stated on fact, on record, that they are gaining another street, I mean, another street parking space. So I mean, I hope he's not.
That hasn't been proved.
But he's stating it on record.
But he was saying on their property.
Right.
And I'm saying, there's a half a spot on the neighbor's property that creates a full parking spot. We have to look at the street as a whole, not what's directly in front. That's, that was my point.
I'm, I'm, I'm taking his, I'm taking him as record, you know, and he's stating that, so we'll, we'll go look, but.
Vote, debate's over, we're voting now, so.
Okay. Thank you. But that was, that was just my testimony. I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalty?
I agree with Mr. Collins, and I think it fits in that neighborhood, and I vote in favor of the application.
Remy Pelosi?
I agree with Margaret Gubernalty, and I approve.
Does that mean you agree with me, because she agrees?
Joseph DiGirolamo?
As long as the, the applicants are going to use those three parking spaces, especially in the summertime, when the parking is unbelievable in town, especially in that area, if they're going to go ahead and do that, and will agree to do that, then I'll, I'll agree to approve.
Michael Richmond?
No, I used to live around that neighborhood, and in the summer, even on a bad rainstorm, if you're parked on the curb, you, your car can literally get flooded. And I, and believe it or not, that extra, whatever, foot of rise there helps that situation out, so I, I know, and the main thing is, they are meeting the minimum landscape coverage. So on that point, I'm going to vote for it. I approve.
Leo, I presume we're still, as Roger indicated, that grading, landscaping, swales, street trees are all part of the conditions.
All conditions, yep.
Very good. Thank you very much, and also, thank you very much for having us bump from last month to this month in last application, we appreciate you staying.
And Brian, last month, we got you first. So this, so last month, you were first.
We're allowed to leave, God willing. Thank you once again.
Brian?
No, they can leave, you can't leave. Any public questions from the public? Public portion's closed, any other business, Brian? Anybody want to make a motion? Jim, you want to second the motion? What? I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right.
New business.
He doesn't, does he?
I've been here four hours.
Yeah.
Maybe, I think I could sleep here.
Mr. Becker, just state your name and address for the record. You don't need to be sworn.
Scott Becker, 9 North Decatur. Scott Becker, 9 North Decatur.
Go ahead.
Richard Jackson, 8101 Fulton Avenue.
Okay.
So I'm here to talk about pool equipment. I've been talking to Jim, Roger for like a couple months. Oops, sorry. I've been talking to Jim and Roger for a couple months at this point. Before we just put the pool equipment in the garage and there's no problem, it's soundproof, this floor is cement, so if it ever leaks, it leaks in the, in the garage, not on the, not in somebody's house. I had a couple houses that were approved and then through zoning or through Roger. And after they were, one of them was up, had it changed where the pool equipment went. I just had a house at 102 South Telavan where I made a cutout in the house to put the pool equipment compliant like 10 feet away. And then I had a full price offer, and the people dropped out because they didn't want the pool equipment to leak in their house. So it's like, it's going to be hard to place pool equipment that we don't have, instead of, now we've had five foot, instead of 10 foot, I don't think it would be a problem anymore because it would be easier to do. People say, oh, build a smaller house. When somebody's paying 2.8 million for a house, they don't want a smaller house. They want what they want, a house. I'm doing a house at 14 South Sumner. They're going to live here full-time. They don't want a little house. They want a regular house. So, and because of COVID from last year, and it's somewhat now, everybody wants a pool. I have people that were going to move into Center City when their kids grew up, and instead of moving to Philadelphia because of everything that went on in the cities, they decided to move to Margate, way better choice. I've been here for 25 years as, not a full-time resident, but I've had a house here for 25 years, not, at 9 North Decatur. Second house there. So something has to be figured out, and I think the best solution is the five-foot, 10-foot thing. Ventnor, Longport are both five-foot. Jim had told one of my, somebody that I'm building for that there's a quieter motors or pumps, and I'd be definitely willing to put that in if, no problem. So I just wanted to kind of like bring it to everybody's attention that it's like a hardship for me or to the, to all builders, the pool equipment, and everybody wants a pool.
Financial hardship?
Well, to me, to the people it is. If, if you went.
Point out in the Minnesota land use law where financial hardship is in there. Please. No, listen, the.
If, if you wanted a pool, a pool in your house and you lived here half the year and lived in Florida the rest, and you, you went back to Florida and the pump broke and it leaked through your house, and then you came back a couple months later and your house was destroyed, you wouldn't love it.
The architect designed it that way. Listen, Margate has small lots. They're postage stamps lots. Even the biggest lot in town has a postage stamp anywhere else. And what's frustrating, not frustrating, what's hard for us is the feedback we get constantly from everybody in town. Why do you let these big houses go? You're meeting, you're, you're never in here for variances. We can't stop it from building these houses. But the people want a pool. Well, the lots aren't big enough to have a pool, but they want it anyway. So you're saying what I was saying and being facetious, well, then you can make the house smaller and then the pool will fit. Well, we don't want a smaller house. Well, you don't always get what you want. We have a problem with the entire population saying these giant houses are ruining the town. I don't think they are, but that's what we have to hear, and I'm sure you hear it too as a developer, or as a damn developer, or whatever the, everybody else calls you. Not you in particular.
Yeah.
Him.
I don't really hear that, but.
But no, I know, and somebody's coming, well, I'm paying 20 million for a house. Well, let's make it reasonable. I'm paying $3 million for a house. I want a pool. Well, the lots aren't big enough for that. So they have to have a small pool. We can't keep, like Jimmy was saying, everybody's pushing another inch, another inch. You can't fit pools on these lots. If you do, well, no, no, you can, look, I bought the lot next to me and put a pool on it, 45 feet long. I'm understanding you can put a 10-foot pool in. You can do that if you want to put a tiny little pool in there. And, and we just approved the 20, right, we approved the 25-foot lot where they put the pool equipment where it was able to go.
Nobody really argues.
Huh? Yeah.
So the garage would be soundproof. It's cinder block.
It's cinder block, but doesn't meet the flood elevation.
Is that true with a separate garage or just if it's attached to the house?
Attached to the house.
If it's attached to the house, right.
But didn't you say that if it was outside, it doesn't have to meet flood elevation?
If it's out on the zone and it's in the backyard sitting on the ground?
It doesn't.
I think this is the actual problem. So before, all these garages were detached, so it wasn't an issue.
Right.
Now the whole design of the house has changed with the parking underneath. It's become an issue. So I think my, my suggestion is we look into alternative, which the easy one would be the five-foot. I had this issue with a Peter Weiss plan. He said he did investigation. The pool equipment's actually quieter than the air conditioning. So if noise is a concern, it's really not a concern. So if we do what Jim, or Mike Richmond suggested and say, okay, you can put it on that platform, but still a soundproof enclosure, so, so no noise isn't a concern, then that solves. So why can't we look in a solution that really wouldn't affect anyone? There'd be no hardship if there's no noise. Where it's quieter than the air conditioning.
I don't understand. This is logical talk you're saying. Hmm? It's continuous. I understand.
Or if we do a soundproof enclosure then, is there another solution that would kind of make everyone happy?
I mean, I don't have a pool.
Put it in the backyard?
No, all right, look.
Yeah, I don't have a pool, but the people behind me have a pool.
They're not going to stop wanting them, and they can't have them because there's no room for them. I don't.
Nobody complains about the size of the pool too much, at least with me. They complain they're, that they have to have a cutout in their house, and they're scared it's going to leak in their house and ruin.
Well, that was the only cutout that I've seen, the one that Terry Cummings did.
Oh, I did one over at, at 102.
And what's, what's below the cutout?
Below the cutout, actually the garage area, but the cutout backs up to the living space.
The garage is below the.
But it backs up to the living space.
The garage is below the cutout.
Yeah.
Which is designed to flood.
Correct.
Well, then it backs up to living space.
I have a quick question. So the BFE plus four, I get the design level, but we can build the pool equipment at 10-foot. Is that not acceptable?
Jim, he's asking you a question.
So I know the design flood level is BFE plus four. We could do the platform at BFE. That's not acceptable?
If it's separate from the house, it could be a ground level, but you don't want it there. You want it up so it's, for a normal flood.
Away from the wall.
No, I'm saying.
Or it would be under the house. I don't know how that works.
How far does it have to be away from the wall of the house if it's in the backyard on the ground?
It needs to be three feet from the house?
No, no, I mean clearances. Clearances for around.
Around the, around the thing. It doesn't have to be three feet from the house. It could be right up against the house.
Depends on the surveyor if they put it on the elevation.
We're back to what the people want because you could raise it up high and then it wouldn't be taking up space, which is going to, what it's going to want.
I don't think you're going to solve this tonight. Maybe we should take it.
No, I, I understand, but you're saying because that's what your buyers want, and they're paying millions of dollars for it. And I'm saying the lots are too small for what they want.
But if it went back in the garage, what we used to do would be no problem. People are scared that it's going to leak when they're in Florida or something like that.
Yeah, but, but here's the deal. Like, like a lot, can I speak for a minute here? A, a lot of HVAC equipment, you know, the roof's notched out and you, you fiberglass the roof. So whether it's, it's HVAC equipment or if it's pool equipment that maybe has more water run through it, but still with the HVAC, if we get a driving rainstorm, so, you know, you know the routine. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta fiberglass the deck.
Yeah, but the problem's the vertical rise. You can only put it so high too. So we couldn't put it like towards the roof. It's got to take up living space.
Yeah, but if it's a notch in the house, I don't care what height it's at.
Yeah, within the fiberglass, it's just.
Right, right. So I, I, which, maybe your neighbor, your neighbors can, I mean, your customers can be afraid of a lot of things, but it's not the reality of the situation.
You understand, like the fiberglass, but the average person I'm selling to, they're like, I don't want it in that house.
Well, that's their issue. They're going to trust a builder.
They're talking about being away. Aren't they here in the summertime and away in the winter when the pool's not running?
Well, they also have people taking care of their houses. People spending $3 million or 20 million have, that's what keeps everybody in business around here with property management.
Yeah, again, I don't think this is something we resolved tonight, but if we could explore, maybe doing the five-foot with a Seon dampening enclosure.
I understand your point. I understand what you're saying.
If we could look into a solution that would really affect or create a hardship, but anyway, that'd be.
I understand it, but the, but the argument that we hear all the time, forget the pool, but I want it.
Yeah.
We hear that all the time. Well, I want it. So I'm here for my variance. Where is it?
So we don't want that.
So that's just my normal reaction when somebody says, this is what my clients want. And look, they're not going to not move to Margate. Everybody wants to move to Margate. Everybody's going to build houses. There's no dirt that, somebody was complaining about Roger, and he was going to sell his house and get out of town. Well, he's going to get a million dollars for his house and he's going to be very well off. Get out of town. Oh, I'm not criticizing you at all. I know your projects.
I, I really don't come in for variances.
No, you don't, and I know you try. I'm.
Guide is better than.
I'm friends with Brian. He always tells me, if we don't want variances, what can we do?
And be honest with you, I'm the one that found, hit the house and land case, so we changed because it was supposed to be in a garage.
Right.
And we went and checked with everybody, so we did it the correct way, so we didn't have the issue.
Yeah, please don't take anything that's against you guys as builders, but just the fact that this is what our clients want. Oh, well. We also have the rest of the town yelling at us for allowing the big houses, and again, make the house smaller. This, this is what, this is what I.
You're only talking 300 square foot smaller.
I understand, but this is what I hear. Well, then they can make the house smaller. So.
Actually, that might happen.
It might, and then the prices go down. But I think you'll still.
And then if the prices go down, then the lot prices go down. So the old lady who's been in her house since 1960 and dies, and her family's going to sell the house, it's going to get 400 instead of 650. So who does that help?
This is what I say to her, but I can't say it on the record.
I'm just using numbers that are lower than the other one number.
Are we televised or just sound?
Hey, like Eli Manning.
Well, the screens are on. They got cameras on. You see it?
All right. Well, thank you for your comments. I appreciate them, and thanks for having to sit through this. All right, see you. Jim, you have a motion?
I made the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait one moment. This is not, it's Ron's last meeting. He's moving. I just wanted everybody to know that.
So he's the guy you were talking about, taking his million dollars and running?
Yep. Yep.
He's going to slip in a pool before he leaves.